I am going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to our fun Zoom board meeting. All attendees are here. Do we have our student trustee Vikram? Yes, I see him. There we are. Hi Vikram. It's so, you know, we just don't get to see anyone in person. We have no, I'm sorry, we have nothing to report out from closed session. And I know we have adjustments to the agenda.
Just a few.
We do. So at the request of Hatta, we are going to move up one item and then we're going to move a couple around. So I'm going to try and summarize them here. And Donna, you and I are going to have our work cut out for us tonight.
This is my favorite page of the agenda right now. Everybody, are you looking at my revised numbers?
So adjustments, we are going to move items 12.1B and 12.1C to after the reports section in the agenda. And then item 12.3A and 12.3B will be moved up to after 12.2B. So that's the reopeners, the public hearing associated with that, to be right before the reports. And then item 12.1D will be moved to after item 12.3B. Nobody followed that, but that is going to get you in and out sooner, Hatta members. And Donna, we'll get through it. So.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
All right, a pledge of allegiance led by Araceli.
Okay, just one second.
Oh, except we want, Chris, do you want to go ahead and do your?
Oh, yeah, about the interpretation.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Si necesitan interpretación al español. Al fondo de la pantalla pueden ver un globo donde dice interpretation or interpretación en inglés. Nomás tiene que empujar allá y puedes escoger español y todo va a estar traducido para usted.
Okay, and Karen, is there something else or was that it?
No, that was it. I just, I'm gonna.
I don't have a flag. Does anybody have a flag?
Oops, there.
Right. Please stand.
And I pledge allegiance.
America and to the republic for which it stands. It's often the hardest part of the board meeting, right there. Special recognition. Chris, do you want to start? Or do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we have two trustees that this will be their last full regular board meeting that are both stepping off the board in December. And so I'm going to start with Jamie Kiff. Jamie, you were president last year, and I feel like I just gave the same speech because when he stepped off as president. But it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you these last four years. And like I said, when you were stepping down as president, you are the epitome of grace under pressure and respect and civility. And I have learned a lot through working with you and just want to thank you for your commitment to our kids and our staff and for the difference you've made for our community. And I wanted to open it up to other trustees to if they had anything they wanted to share.
Okay. So Jamie, thank you for your service these last four years. You have been, like Chris said, such a great advocate for students. And throughout the years, you've also been such a great model of dedication, grace, open-mindedness, and thoughtful decision-making. When I grow up, I want to be just like you.
Oh, you're sweet, Araceli. Thank you.
I'm so honored to have served alongside you these past four years, as you have taught me a lot. And I'm so grateful that now I'll call you a friend.
Agreed. Thank you, Araceli. Very kind.
I have some words. I had to write it down because I get tongue-tied. So I could say a lot about Jamie, but I'm going to focus on her year as president because I got to be vice president with her that year, which really gave us an opportunity to get to know each other a lot more, even though our kids went to school together and stuff. We really didn't cross paths a lot. I also was so impressed with how Jamie led the board through a challenging time. Always with professionalism and a word you're going to hear a lot here, incredible grace. Always with a focus on how we as a board and a district could do better. She modeled a masterclass in leadership under pressure, intuitively balancing firmness with fairness. And she met with, listened to, and responded to dozens of community members representing the district in an incredibly positive way. Jamie is smart, eloquent, and a natural leader, and she was amazingly productive board member in her single term as a trustee. So thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Donna. That's very kind of you. I appreciate those sweet words. Thank you.
So Jamie, I wrote down three words and they've been used, but I'm gonna use them again. I certainly second, third, fourth, if you will, everything that's been said. You are you are dignity personified. I was so impressed last year with your leadership. I don't know what that was, but I agree. I'm sure that was cheers. Yeah, just so impressive. The word grace immediately comes to mind. You were cool. When I was boiling inside, I don't know what you were like inside, but your grace and your ability to say things with such grace and with such intelligence amazed me all year and continues to do so. And then finally, your class, you're a classy person. I don't know all of your background. I only know what I see, and what I see is class. And I am thrilled to have been with you, even though distance at this point, and to be part of your life for two years. I am saddened. I'll say this again with Judy, but I am saddened that you're leaving the board. You've contributed so much to the district, so much to support of Chris, the support of other board members, but most importantly, your support of kids. And I appreciate that. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
So, thank you. It's my turn. And I didn't know you, Jamie, before you came on the school board. In fact, I only only saw you at one of our candidates forums for the first time. And and mine's more personal, I guess. I so appreciate your willingness and engagement with me. And and you're always looking, looking at the whole picture about what this position is about, that you that you were looking at what the ramifications were for every decision that we made. And how, how not just that decision would affect us, but how it fit into the whole picture of what the the school board trustee's jobs are. And so along with your grace and your dignity and, and my envy of your being able to say things in the most gracious and diplomatic way, I really appreciate the vision that you have for, for what we can be and what we can do. So thank you and thanks for being a friend.
Thank you, Judy. Very thoughtful. Do I get to say something now?
You can if you want.
I do.
Be nice, be nice.
Well, I've been saving it all up. No. It has been, it has been such an honor and pleasure to serve on the board on behalf of the community of Healdsburg. And I ran for the board because my kids had such a tremendously wonderful experience in HUSD, and I wanted to be more of a part of that. And it has been really one of my greatest life's honors to this stage to serve our community and to serve with a board that is so kind to one another and so caring, but yet so honest with one another. I really have appreciated that. And I'm excited that we have two new board members. I think that's the way it should be a lot of the time. I would really love to encourage everyone to try to serve in their community. I think it makes a big difference just in your own personal understanding of the place that you live. And I think everyone has something that they can contribute positively for the greater good. And the more people serve, I think the more people will understand the complexities of the decisions that any board has to make or any council has to make. So the more people that get involved, the better. But I consider all of you friends, and you have enriched my life being a part of this board. So I take away a little bit of each of you when I go on and about, and I will be in the audience. I look forward to staying involved because I'm very proud of the work that the district has done. I'm very proud of our district with our teachers and our administrators. And we have a lot of work to do for these students. So I'm excited to, I'm excited for the trajectory. And I know it's going to be a hard work, but it's going to be great work. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. And Chris, we are in great hands and it's been an honor to work alongside you.
Thank you. All right.
Lovely. Thank you, everyone.
Yay, Jamie.
Thank you all.
And next up, Judy. Sixteen years on the school board. And how many years in the classroom in Healdsburg were you here?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. So that's a collective forty-one years serving this community in the schools in some capacity. And I mean, that's just an incredible gift of a professional life. And so this community is really indebted to you. On a personal note, Judy, you and I have spent a lot of time together. I kind of, I hopefully this sounds right. I see you kind of as like my Healdsburg mom. You've given me lots of advice. You look out for me personally. You call me on things. Sometimes we don't always agree. And like clockwork, you call me at around eight thirty AM on the morning after a board meeting. And it, I will, I love our conversations. I love the brainstorming that we do together. And I'm going to miss the time that we spend. And more than anything, you have a huge heart. Sorry, my phone's ringing. A huge heart for our kids, a heart for our community, a heart for our teachers, having been one for so long. And like I said, this is a community indebted to you for your service to it. So I just, on behalf of everyone in Healdsburg, I want to thank you for the amazing work that you've done on the board and for all those lives changed in the classroom as well. So I'm going to open it up to other trustees.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so Judy, I want to thank you for your many years of service. Ever since I first had the opportunity to work with you in 1999, you have modeled what it means to be a great educator and a great advocate for students. We'll miss your wisdom, your experience. I have so appreciated how you always put students first, but never lose sight of the fact that in order to meet our students' needs, we must also meet the needs of our faculty. So I really appreciate your heart for all of our stakeholders and partners. And just thank you for always bringing another lens to our meetings and to make sure that we have the whole picture when we are making decisions. And so I just want to thank you for your immense leadership, your, your wisdom, and just your strong advocacy for all of, all of our partners in education. Thank you.
Thanks, Araceli.
I'll go next. Again, wrote a few comments down. I was also vice president under Judy in my like second year, I think, on the board. And I was still pretty I felt, at least I felt so inexperienced. And Judy just so freely shared her experiences with me and her expertise with me, as others have said. But it really provided me personally a perspective that was not only instructional about just how schools work and whatnot. But at that point in my board tenure, it was really invaluable to learn from somebody with such deep knowledge. Because I'm not an educator. I'm not a teacher. This was getting in deep like this was new to me. Her opinions could sometimes be controversial. And certainly, when she had a strong opinion, she was very clear what it was. But always, always, always reflected a deep love of our district and a vision for how it could be better. She's a great model for growth mindset. Putting in a plug for half today, and growth mindset is our theme. Because even after all her years in education on the board, she never lost her enthusiasm for learning and striving for greatness. Judy, I'm glad you're a neighbor because we can run into each other and continue our friendship and talk about our gardens and whatnot. And we won't lose contact, which is great. And I do hope that the gift we're giving you brings you joy and remembering all you've contributed to our community when you, I don't want to spoil it, when you see it out in your garden. So, and I too, I'm, I'm really excited about our two new trustees, but I am definitely sad to be losing both of you, both Jamie and Judy. You, it's, you've just been integral parts of this team. So thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Judy, I it was nine, ten days ago after a meeting, the next day, I think it was, I sent you a little quick message. Because I wanted it to mean, excuse me, I wanted it to mean more than just, you know, us talking at you. But I don't think that we're talking at you. But at the time, I said I wanted to appreciate how, to express how much I appreciate your knowledge. Forty-one years. So you probably started in your, like, sixteen.
No.
I constantly is like, how do you know this? But also your insight and your clear empathetic perspective. I don't think there's been a meeting, at the board meeting or in closed session, that you haven't, as my colleagues have said, taken a look and said, this is what our kids are feeling. This is what our teachers are telling me. We have to respect that. We have to do what's best. As was said, what's best for our kids, what's best for our teachers, and understand what they're telling us because they are the professionals. And you constantly bring that I want to say in our face, at least in my face, because it comes from your heart. Because right there is where you, where you are. I have only served two years with you, but your reputation preceded you, or preceded me showing up, I guess. But it's also, as I said, it's a brilliance that you bring to our discussions. And not just brilliance as an intellect, but just a light that you shine on the work that we do as board members, on the work the superintendent does, I'm pointing down because he's down there, to what he has to do, a brilliance to what our staff does, and obviously, the learning of our kids. And for that, I thank you for these two years that I've been able to share with you. And you will be missed.
Thanks, Mike. I'm done choking. Sorry. I was getting ready to go and took a swig of water and sorry, I had to excuse myself. But I'm glad to go last. Judy, it has been a joy to serve with you. I, from day one, just felt really blessed to be on the board with you. I've looked to you, whether you've known it or not, as a mentor to me. You've always made time for me when I had no idea what anything meant or asked maybe questions that seemed, I don't know, unintelligent. You were always so gracious to me to share your knowledge and just impart just great wisdom. You're one of the wisest people I know and one of the most intelligent people that I know. And your depth of knowledge has served this board for years. And I think that's one to be, going to be one of the greatest the things that is going to be missed the most because there's nothing that you couldn't say, well, you know, this is what the situation was before, or, you know, whatever it is, whatever it was, you just brought to the board a, just a depth of knowledge that just cannot be replaced. So that was, it always made me feel good to know the background. And I think it always helped me make a better decision. You're, you, no one is more prepared for a board meeting ever than Judy. And she would catch things and see things that I could have read the board packet twice, which I will lie that I never did. But she would see things that I would, that I just would have glossed over. And so I've always appreciated that. She is probably one that holds Chris's feet to the fire more than any of us. And I've always respected and appreciated that, too, because ultimately, we all know that he's the only person that we oversee in the district. And she, she made sure that that was going to happen and did it in a loving and gracious way. Chris didn't get very much wiggle room. So I appreciate your kindness. I appreciate your love for the students in our district. And I also appreciate how you never lost sight and whether the teachers feel it or know it. You brought the teachers up in almost every conversation. What, you know, what, what's, what's, what's the impact going to be for our staff? What more can we do? And I really want the folks out there to know that our, her colleagues, whether they were served with her or came after her, she has always been your greatest supporter. So our teachers have always been deep in the heart of Judy's heart. So I really appreciate that you've kept that focus. We are certainly student-centered, but you've always been one to help us remember what we need to be doing for, for our teachers as well in the district. So I love you as a friend, and I can't wait to have more tea with you.
Well, you're, you're making me I don't cry easily, but I could. I loved my career as a teacher in this district. From the minute my kids, my own children were in fourth and sixth grade, when I started teaching across the hall from my daughter's sixth grade classroom. I, I loved my career as a teacher. And when I retired, I retired actually a few years earlier than I expected to. I had an opportunity to go on the school board. I ran unopposed. Doesn't happen anymore. And that's a good thing, that there are more candidates usually than there are openings. And I've worked with four different superintendents. And I've learned something from every one of them. But tonight, I just want to say to Chris, thank you. It has been such a joy to me to have as a superintendent of this school district, someone who loves Healdsburg and, and its schools as much as I do, and who has the integrity and the, the vision that you have. I've also enjoyed our conversations. And I've enjoyed your pushing at me as well as my pushing at you. I have actually served with several different trustees now over these sixteen years. And, and I've learned something from every one of them. But this last, this last term, my four years in this last term have been fabulous. I work with amazing people who it has brought me a great satisfaction. And I am ready to to work in my garden, which is probably what I like to do the best besides reading books. And, and I know that I'm I'm leaving the district in exceptional hands. So I just appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. And thank you to the district office staff, to the, to Karen, to Debbie. Debbie, who held my hand and fixed things for me all the time, since I'm a little bit shaky about technology. And to, to Erin, to Annie Malar, and to Jeff, Chris's predecessor. I really thank, thank what's happened in Healdsburg. We have come to, to be an exceptional school district. And and that's a good thing. And I am so pleased that I have two grandchildren who will be the benefit of this school district and are already the benefit of the school district. So I get to know what's going on via my grandsons, which is pretty special. So thank you all very, very much. I don't know how many board meetings I will attend as a member of the public. But I was counting up how many board meetings in sixteen years I missed, and it's one handful. So it's been a real pleasure for me. And I've enjoyed being on the board almost as much as I enjoyed teaching. And I loved that. So thank you. Thank you all very much. And thank you, teachers, and thank you, support staff. What COVID did to me is it kept me out of your classrooms. And that was my great joy, was to be able to go into your classrooms and see the magnificent work that you do from transitional kindergarten all the way up through AP classes. I have nothing but respect for the passion that you bring to your careers. It's just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And let's not let the conversations end. My phone is always, is always ready to be picked up.
Oh, I'm sure I'm going to call you.
We did, I don't know, Karen, do you want to hold it up and show what we got them? So we did get on behalf of the district and gratitude to you both, a wind chime that Karen's going to hold up.
Oh, how nice.
Delivered to you. So Judy, we know the garden is an important place for you. So it's okay, Karen, nobody can hear but me. Let's make it.
We can hear Karen's mute.
Anyway, so maybe it's too heavy.
That's beautiful.
There you go.
Yeah. Oh, what a lovely thing.
So I'm sorry, we can't be all together to recognize your service, but we really do want to thank you both. And just really appreciate, you know, the trustees serve as volunteers on this board. And, you know, four years and sixteen years, it's a, it's a long time to volunteer. So we certainly appreciate that. And thank you on behalf of our students and staff and parents.
Welcome. Well, you're welcome. It's been my pleasure. And Jamie and I are going to have a great time having.
Great times.
We finally get to, we finally get to visit.
Exactly.
All right, no Brown Act violations anymore.
I was gonna say, I might, I might have to join you, but yeah. So continuing on with positive, wonderful things, celebrating our success is looking at the HHS Skills USA program.
Yeah, and I see Chef Corcino in his coat. So if we could unmute him. And Erin, were you going to introduce?
Yeah, I'll introduce real quickly. And I think Bill Halliday wants to say a few words as well, Principal Bill Halliday. So, yeah, this is a fun, fun part of the night. This is where we get to celebrate our successes. This is long overdue. We should have done this back in June. We had it slotted. And then such is life. The board meetings just started getting full with work that just had to be done. So we pushed it and pushed it. So thank you to Chef and the students who were patient with us. Chef Corcino reestablished Skills USA chapter, which is a CTE membership organization, so career technical education organization. We have some of the most robust CTE programs that I have seen of any size school, let alone, yay, there we go. I'm starting to see students excellent, starting to see student faces pop in because we are going to have some students here with us tonight. We have an amazing career technical education program. The culinary program, obviously, where we are in the world, Healdsburg, California, right, needs to be strong. And, and thus it is. But I think that it's important, and I think Corcino will talk a little bit about this, that this is not only just about culinary, but Skills USA serves just about any workplace interest that students have. Obviously, we've taken some good wins in culinary over this last year. And I think we're queued up to take some good wins come the spring. And I, I think we're queued up to take some good wins come the spring under Chef Corsino's guidance and leadership. But we do have other subject areas that participate and other students so can foster their interest, whether we run the CTE program on our campus or not. Obviously, it helps. So I wanted to personally thank Chef Corsino for taking this on. I don't know when this man sleeps or shaves for that matter. Maybe he doesn't because I don't think he does. He is always, always busy doing a million things. So I think it's that he's used to not sleeping as a chef because they stay up until like two or three o'clock in the morning and then get up at six again to, to work. So thank you so much, Chef. I'm going to let Bill say a few words and then we'll turn it over to you and the students.
Thank you, Erin. I just, I just want to add real briefly here that since the moment Chef stepped onto our campus, he continues to enhance our CTE and culinary programs, always with a focus on bringing different opportunities to students. And Skills USA is just one example of the wealth that he's brought to our, our campus. Always willing to do the hard work. He's going to turn in another course request for a new course later this evening. Always willing to collaborate and always asking about what student interests are and what we can do creatively to, to meet those needs and, and those interests and pathways. Really happy to introduce him tonight. Really happy that he brought along some of his fantastic kids. And Chef Corsino, take it away.
Well, with that type of introduction, I think I'm done and it's time to go. So yeah, two years ago, I, I had a meeting with Bill and Erin. And this was an organization that I was familiar with from back east. When I was in high school, I was in a different program, but also enriching. I got to do competitions. And I won a state championship in pastry and culinary and got some scholarships. And it's something I wanted to bring to the school and something that I think we were, were missing. And the great thing and why I chose Skills USA is exactly for what Erin mentioned was it's more than just culinary and hospitality. There are other organizations like FCC LA. And they're very limiting, but CTE in Skills USA is extremely broad. And it goes way beyond what we even teach. And I'm actually very excited to give you guys kind of an update on our competition registration that ended last Friday. Because we have areas where I have zero experience in, but we have great mentors backing them up. So if we want to go to the, the next slide. So Skills USA, we kind of already talked about what it is. We are currently a little bit more of a competitive chapter than anything else, but we are fielding a community service team of three, which I'm really excited about their project. It's going to be in gleaning vegetables and we're hopefully they can pair with the community with that and really kind of get that out there. They're really excited about it. So, and it's food, so I'm excited about it. But it's about collaboration. It's about leadership and excellence. If we have students who want to get into the, the upper echelons of the regional, state and national level leadership, I'm, I'm here to support them and I know the school is as well. We can go to the next slide. And there, we're at the regionals. Last year, we, we fielded a, a good group of students last year. We had five actively competing. It was supposed to be a couple more, but our, our engineering team got a little bit of cold feet. They're not getting cold feet this year though. But we had active 12 members for our first year, which was a little lower than I was anticipating. But we, we really got our, our feet on strong ground with it. And with the regional competition, we took a first and second in restaurant service, which was awesome. And in culinary arts, you see Elliot there on the far right. Came in third place. You can also see he's wearing a glove. If the boy didn't burn himself during competition, he totally would have taken first place. He was only five points behind the leader because he burned his finger on some oil though. So I'm going to take that as a good win anyway. And he's going to be competing again as well as our restaurant service team. We had two in commercial baking. We have got two coming up again this year. One of them actually switched over to restaurant service. And then all, we had four out of the five qualify for the state competition, which we were so excited about. Travel was booked and then obviously that didn't happen. That got canceled. Nationals got canceled, which leads us to kind of rebuilding almost this year. So we can go to the next slide. So where are we this year? We are, as of this was made two weeks ago, we are even higher in membership. We're at about 20 students and rising in membership right now, hoping to get at least 25 this year. And these are active members. We've been holding meetings about every two to three weeks now. And here's an update of what we're going to be covering in our competitions. We've got two going for culinary arts with two training right alongside them. We've got three in restaurant service and I'm really excited. And the one student I did see here was so excited because she wants to be a brewer. She's a sophomore with passions in being a brewer. So it's like, well, what can we do to, to foster that? Well, she's got to learn the hospitality side of things as well, especially in Sonoma County. We've got two going for commercial baking with one training behind them, one training in aviation maintenance, which I know absolutely nothing about. But we've got a mentor backing her up. Our digital media team has been replaced by our community service team. We've got one training firefighter and one in healthcare, which is extremely convenient that both the firefighter and healthcare come from families of firefighting and healthcare in these times of COVID. So we have all the gear and stethoscopes for them. So we're really getting past what we even cover here at HHS and we're fostering all of that. And that leads us to the last slide is where are we going? And the goal is to foster not just what we have available at HHS. We're really looking to field a digital media team next year in broadcast journalism and short film and audio and radio as well. We have some really excited students. Little cold feet during COVID times, so they didn't want to compete this year. We really want to expand into woodworking with Terry Pagni and Otto with Brian Osborne, getting in the arts with Linus Lancaster. And whatever else, if we can find a mentor for a student in cosmetology and barbering and all of these different things that Skills USA offers, we are here to back them up. And that's pretty much what I have unless the, the board has any questions.
Just love it.
This is, it's amazing. I mean, you've kind of taken this from nothing into really quite an amazing program with every imaginable topic of interest. It's fantastic.
And Chef, I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to say, I don't know anything about aviation, but I'm sure willing to have some kids that want to do it. So I appreciate that. That's really awesome that you're willing.
Shout out to Shelley Anderson because she's my first call of, do we know anybody at the airport?
Could you make a friend at the airport if you don't have one?
We're, we're in the process of making one right now.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chef.
You're welcome.
I wanted to mention is that, you know, the, the district provides a very, very small amount of funding for this. Really, in order for students to participate in this, they need an excited adult like Chef Corsino, who does this out of the goodness of his heart. But in order to attend competitions and in the, in order to sometimes purchase some of the specialized equipment that students need to practice, fundraising has to happen. And, you know, Chef Corsino's didn't let them, that slow him down nor, nor did it Principal Halliday to say, we'll figure it out. And I just wanted to thank the Hillsburg community. They've stepped up. But students do need to fundraise. So, you know, later we'll get into some donations that have been meant, made. And, you know, always looking at a little plug, you can always make a donation to a student through, through the district for them to compete. They've got to find money to travel. Hopefully someday they'll be traveling, but there's other costs that come with the program as well. And it's, it's pretty much all fundraised.
We were the last fundraiser last year before everything had to be shut down.
Yeah.
Well, I am sorry that those plans to go to state were, you know, quashed. But it's great to just see growing enthusiasm too. And this program kind of reminds me a little bit of the like of FFA in, in that it's, it does leadership and, and different structure, right? It's.
A similar model or and just a, a different type of focus.
Yeah, which is brilliant. So good.
Congratulations and thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Thanks, Derek. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. See you later.
Thank you.
Okay, that was awesome. Consent agenda. Are there any questions or changes to the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second anywhere?
A second.
Thank you. Any other, no questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Okay, um, public comments on agenda items. I will just notify everybody that if you do have a comment on, if you have a comment on a, have we already done non-agenda? Did I already miss that?
That was before the consent.
I apologize. If anyone has any comments on non-agenda items, something that's not on the agenda to discuss tonight, please notify Karen and she will queue you up to speak. If you have a comment on an agenda item, also please notify Karen. Preferably maybe just before that agenda item actually comes up so that we're ready, you know, ready to transfer over to, for you to speak when it's time. All right. So moving on to regular business, construction update. Or do you, Chris, are you going to say something first?
We, we know Tanya Dale well, and she is here to give us an update on construction here in the district.
Thanks for having me. It feels like forever since I've seen all of you, but that's because I've been in my kitchen slash home office slash education space for my children. So I just wanted to give you an update on what we've been doing, even though everything is different right now. We've pushed through and been able to accomplish some of our goals. So Karen, I think you have a presentation.
Yes.
To throw up. Just to give you a brief update of where we're at and what we're doing still.
Can everybody see it?
Yep.
Yes.
Well.
All right. So I'm going to briefly touch on our bond project updates for the high school new gym and locker rooms, the junior high gym modernization and STEM classroom, and the high school baseball field renovation. Next slide. So most of this is pictures because since we all can't go on a nice tour together, this is the, the best way to give you sort of some visuals. But here is the high school new gym. It has been completed. We are in the just final stages of closing out a couple little minor things and doing contract closeout. And I will probably send the notice of completion next, next board meeting for you. But this included a brand new competition sized gym with a brand new boys locker room, brand new girls locker room, auxiliary spaces and team rooms for both the boys and the girls and bathrooms. Next slide. So here's a, a picture of the inside. It is bright. It has got tons of natural light. It is gorgeous and I'm really excited about this.
Sorry.
That's right. Go ahead. So the next one is our junior high gym modernization. And this space I'm just as excited about because anybody who's ever been in this space for the last, I don't know how many years forever, it is dark, it is dingy. We have opened up the old existing windows that used to be in there and there is a ton of natural light. It's going to have brand new wood floor that is down as you can see. It's going to be all bright and nice. And I'm super excited this project will be done actually right around the beginning of the year. If you want to go to the next slide. It also included renovating the girls and boys locker rooms. It renovated the band room and we put in a new STEM classroom with a huge roll up door that the car, when they work on the car can roll in and out of, and they don't have to put it on the stage of the NPR, which is great. And one of the really fun, I don't know if anybody's been by there, but we've now incorporated all of our campus colors on the exterior. And I'm really excited about this building specifically because it's just so beautiful. And the character of the building, I felt like got totally revived and refreshed. So if you haven't been by there, drive by. It's really exciting.
Beautiful.
I went by on Monday and Tuesday and it was, it was really fun to see the paint job.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about it.
That's great.
And so then we, this was a project that was actually supposed to be a next summer project. And I back, I don't remember if it was in March or April, I called Chris and I said, you know, rather than shut the field down next summer, when hopefully everybody's actually out and about again, let's use this time where nobody's on it and let's get this project pushed through. So we actually added this to the gym contractors work and got this done. And they were actually supposed to start putting sod down yesterday and the rain put a damper on that. And so hopefully in the next couple of days, we'll see new sod going down and then it'll sit. And by the time hopefully spring comes around, if there's the availability, we'll be able to have people on a brand new restored field. So that is, that, the, the last thing that we have to do there is the scoreboards, which did require DSA approval. So they will follow.
So does that mean that field will be closed to public use through the winter or for some length of time?
Yes, it'll, it'll be closed. It was, it was closed for quite a while anyways and had opened back up a little bit. But we're using the, the rainy season when it needs to, the, when the sod will need to establish and germinate. And right now I think we're not expecting to have people in those public areas right now anyway. So it'll be open up probably around February, March, most mid-February.
It totally makes sense and it sounds like exactly the right thing to do to plant now and let it all take root. But Chris, we definitely need to put up lots and lots of signs and explaining why people won't have access to that field.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the, the positive, and I, you know, I think if we can get this message out there too, is that it would have been down all of next summer and fall.
Right. No, no, I know. And I love that we were, and it was, thank you so much for like suggesting this because it's brilliant to be getting it done now.
Yeah. The good thing is too, that, you know, they, I think the track is still, I, I'm not actually sure about this, but I think the track and the synthetic field is open for regular hours.
People are on it. People are on it.
So.
Not always using it appropriately, I will add. I've had to kick some people off.
So the projects we have in planning, and this is really kind of our only project that is in the, in the drawing stage. And this was, once we now have these brand new girls locker rooms in our new gym, we took the old girls locker rooms, which were in Frost Hall and needed to be updated as well. And that is going to be turned into a conditioning space. So weight room and training. It'll have a really great open area that you can do circuit training or all kinds of stuff. And so this project is, is just about to go into the state architect for review. And the nice thing about this project is because we have the new space in the new building, if kids were on campus, we can pretty much do this project anytime. So as soon as we get DSA approval, we'll get it out to bid and hopefully get it under construction very soon in the spring. So just, this is my slide that I show you almost every time I come see you, just sort of keeping us where we are and where we are going in, in our bond projects. And so we are pretty much through our whole second bond sale and well into our third bond sale. At this point, there, we did use more money, as we've talked about a few times on the junior high project, because we ended up adding some scope to that. But it was really the right thing to do to make sure that that project was complete. So the last project in here, which we have not started yet, is the new auditorium and site work. And I'm just highlighting it because we do have not that total amount in the, in the funds left because we did spend some money with the junior high project, but we do have some other things coming through. So that'll be a discussion that we'll have coming up shortly. Next slide. And then I just wanted to give you an update on our master planning. So as is required by Ed Code, you are required to update your master plan. And since we've done quite a lot of work since we did our last master planning, we're in the process of doing that at the high school and the junior high campuses, sort of taking, okay, here's where we were, here's the things we've done. Let's update those. Let's talk about anything that has changed, anything that's new, and we will bring that back. I'm hoping to bring that back in the next couple of months, maybe in the beginning of the year to you guys to show what those updated campus master plans look like for the high school and the junior high. And then we haven't really had long range facility master plans for HES and Fitch Mountain. And so we will be getting those going. We have done site assessments with our architect. And what that means is that is going through the campuses, finding out what all the deficiencies are for access compliance, for items that are needing updating. And then we'll do a master plan session with those campuses as well to talk about where their facilities are going, what their needs are at their facilities. So that one will probably be a little bit behind the junior high and the high school, but we'll bring those back to you next year as well. So that one will probably be a little bit behind the junior high and the high school, but we'll bring those back to you next year as well. So other things, just to keep mentioning, we are still in line for Prop 51 reimbursement for the money that we spent at the high school and the junior high. We still are expecting it in 2022, although COVID has slowed things down a little bit. But I talk to our funding consultant every once in a while, and she says that's still where she pegs this to possibly come in. So there's the reimbursement amounts that we will get from those, the bond, the bonds that were sold by the, the state.
Add, can you go back to that last slide, that I will be advocating that that money be earmarked for the elementary school campuses? It doesn't have to be spent at the high school and the junior high, and we are going to be having some needs that come up. Obviously, HES is quite an old building, the main building there. And, um, and, and Fitch, you know, although newer, is, is having some issues. And so we want to make sure we have money aside to be able to take care of those campuses as well, neither of which were touched by the past bonds that we did.
Is there a question? I'm sorry.
So, uh, at what part will we then talk about what's left of the bond money? And what, how do we move forward? Like, what's kind of next, right?
Yeah, I think when we bring the master plan back, it'll give us sort of our, that's our roadmap, right? That's your roadmap for all your campuses, and so that'll sort of be the natural progression that we'll start having those conversations about, okay, here's what we've got, here's what we've got left. Reaffirming what our priorities are, and like Chris said, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of with him. You know, when we started doing our assessments at the HES campus, you know, those mechanical units are well at their end of their lifecycle, and you're gonna have some roof things you're gonna need to do. So there's gonna be just some stuff that is gonna come up in those master plans and facility assessments that we're gonna have to take care of. So that will just be part of the natural discussion.
Okay.
So I, I just want to make, make sure Chris is gonna laugh. That, um, that we fulfill our promise to have some sort of an auditorium. And I see that there was 21 million left for the auditorium, and that that's not enough to do what the project originally was, but it's real important to me, since that was part of the original bond, that we fulfill our promise to this community on how we spend our bond money. Just wanted to say that.
And if you don't do that, Judy's gonna rerun.
No, I'm not.
I, I can make a comment on, I, you know, I got a tour a while ago of the new gym. It is gorgeous. Um, it is outstanding. It makes me want to put on my basketball shoes, but I, I won't go out there. Insurance won't cover my, my body. And, and the locker rooms, like, wow. I mean, I, I have to say that the outside of the junior high gym looks great. Uh, I've been by several times. It's on my way to wherever I'm going most of the time. And then I have to say the baseball field renovation, I mean, that was very insightful. It is fun to hear my friends talk about what are they doing, what are they doing? Didn't we just redo that? They're not doing the track, or it says, now we're not doing the track. I haven't explained to them, and again, how your, you know, fortuitous thinking, saying, you know, we can't do anything else, why don't we do the field? Uh, I think is great, and it's, it's fun for me. Um, I live up off March, and, um, you know, I drive by, and it's like, oh, they're doing this, oh, they're do, oh, they're getting the plumbing in. Oh, okay, so, and it was fun to watch, and truly, I can't wait to see when the whole project is done. If it's anything like these other projects, um, it's gonna be gorgeous. And maybe we don't have to let anybody play on it. We can just, uh, you know, keep them off, and we can sell tickets to drive by and look at it. Because it looks.
Careful. Careful. Get everybody all riled up there, Mike.
That's what I do.
I'm with you. I, I don't live too far from there either, and, and, you know, one of my, I would have to say, one of my proudest things working in this district is obviously my kids are gonna benefit from all of these campuses, and that's super exciting for me, and this is my community, and I'm, I'm proud of that, and I'm proud to work in this community. And so, um, seeing all these things that we've been talking about, especially the gym, you know, we've been talking about that for a long time and seeing the junior high. Um, I, my son is a junior high student, and every time I go over to that, that job site, he wants to go. And I said, you can't go. It's, it's a construction site, but he goes, I thought I missed my campus, and I want to see what it looks like. So it's, um, that's really fulfilling for me.
Well.
That'll be extra exciting when they all come back.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
All right.
Hey, uh, now bouncing around, we're moving to 12 to A, Community Advisory Committee nomination.
Yeah, so Diane, are you on?
I am, hold on. I was expecting to be far later, so I missed the turnaround. Anyhow, I'm very, very pleased to introduce Brady. I saw him on a little bit early. Brady, are you there?
He's there, he's on, I can see.
Okay.
Karen, can you, can you unmute Brady just so he can say hi?
Hi, Brady.
You can mute yourself again, Brady.
But only for a minute. So I'm not gonna take too much time, but, um, this is quite an honor, and I feel very privileged to introduce Brady tonight. The, um, Community Advisory Committee is, um, a committee that's formed of parents, of some administrators, and it's sort of an offshoot of the county Salsa. So, and I've been attending on and off for the last 10 years, and have never seen a student representative until now. And I think that we have, um, it's sort of a formality that the board accepts Brady, uh, and, uh, you know, approves his nomination to the Community Advisory Council. And I'm, I'm just gonna share a little, Brady, will you share with them? He had his first, um, student meeting last night, and I heard it was really well-attended. So when you pop on to say hi, I want you to talk a little bit about that. He led a group of students who are meant to inform what we do in the world of special education.
Do, we were gonna show the video of talking about the, uh, the junior high. So Brady's a seventh grader at Healsburg Junior High. And he made a video talking about his work on this committee and, and how it's been at the junior high. So Karen, can you cue that up?
I will. Do you see the video?
No.
I see counterpoint.
Counterpoint.
Sorry. Try this again. I want that one. Do you see it? Okay. Um, let me play.
Okay.
In the middle.
Hi, guys. My name is Brady Morton. I'm a, I'm a seventh grader in Healsburg Junior High. I used to go to school at AVS, which stands for Island Zone Valley School. And I'm very excited to be on the board meeting. And what I'm most excited about is I want to hear people's voices and just stand up for themselves, be an advocate for yourself, and and that's what it means that, that's what it means to be in the board meeting. It's super awesome.
Nice job.
Super awesome, Brady. Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Brady, we think you're super awesome.
Yeah.
So, do you, would you like to say a couple of words?
Of course. I just want to say thank you for, for nominating me. I'm so happy to be here on the board meeting with you guys. So happy to see all of you. Number excited.
Awesome. Thank you.
Brady, thank you.
Thank you. Brady, thank you for serving.
Yes.
So we do need a, um, a motion in a second and to approve Brady's nomination.
I am moved through Brady's nomination.
Oh, everybody wants.
Everybody wants to move this one, huh? Golly. Um, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Great. Fantastic. Congratulations, Brady.
You're on.
Brady, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your message. Stand up and advocate. I appreciate that, and keep, keep delivering that message. We need more of that. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for serving.
Thank you, Brady.
Thanks, Brady.
Okay, item, that was great. Item number 12 to be Equity and School Culture Update.
So we have this standing item to talk about equity work going on in the district, and today's discussion's gonna be just a little bit different. I wanted to highlight, um, some of the difficulties that we're encountering with distance learning as it pertains to equity and school culture. And Fran, uh, Fran, Karen, can you put up the, uh, the presentation, please? I can go to the next slide. Um, so this, this sort of started when this, this issue kind of surfaced when we decided to pull progress reports for secondary at both the junior high and the high school here in Healsburg, and saw that we had a major increase in the number of Ds and Fs, and in the number of students who had a D or an F grade at both schools. And I was really worried, you know, knowing distance learning's been really hard on our teachers. They are working extremely hard to try and meet the needs of the kids. Um, and having experienced a little bit firsthand and hearing, um, of issues that have happened in the community for other kids, you know, I was worried about how students were doing and their well-being as well. I reached out to some superintendents countywide and found that it wasn't limited to Healsburg at all. This was a countywide issue, that there was very similar data, um, being seen across the county. So a number of superintendents called on SCO to hold a quick summit to bring teachers together and to talk just, you know, what is going on, what are the issues that we are seeing, and what are the bright spots? What are the, the successes that we can share, uh, and maybe emulate across the county? And it was really actually a powerful summit or convening. Um, I think it's something that we should continue to do, is really awesome, just to get teachers together to collectively problem-solve and talk about practice and craft. This is just a quick glimpse of the grades you can see in Sonoma County, breakdown by, uh, grade level, and then versus Healsburg. So our first progress report, which was at six weeks, we had 39% of our students had at least one F. Which is an increase from last year of about 10%. And, and you can see Sonoma County was 37%, so you can, you can keep going. One thing I want to highlight is this isn't, this issue isn't just really about grades. It's about student well-being, and then mental health plays a tremendous role in it, as well as other obstacles that are impeding students' learning. And we gave, for the first time last year in Healsburg, the Youth Truth Survey, which is a national survey that has been given nationally for a few years and is starting to pick up steam. Um, it was administered on April 20th in Healsburg, um, had been given in other Sonoma County districts prior, in prior years. Um, and so we have some interesting county and school data that I wanted to share with you. So this is Sonoma County data. We, we didn't have a pre-COVID survey, but you can see that students in Sonoma County, prior to, prior to the pandemic, 60% or so said that they felt like they learned a lot almost every day, and then it dropped down to 41%. Um, obviously, we all know it's an obstacle, um, to do things virtually. This, uh, breaks, breaks it down in terms of students' self-professed ability to focus on their learning. And you see that there is, uh, there's inequities apparent there, and, and students reporting back about how they're able to focus on their learning while schools are closed. Again, this is Sonoma County data, um, but you can see that the lowest ethnic, uh, the lowest group or ethnicity is 43% of our Hispanic students in Sonoma County reported that they were able to focus on their learning. As compared, you know, in Healsburg, we have Hispanic or Latino students, um, and then basically white students with a real small number of other ethnicities represented, and you can see that white students significantly able to focus on learning, um, above and beyond their Hispanic or Latino classmates. Obstacles to learning. This was an interesting one. So during COVID, this was administered nationally around April 20th. And nationally, the, this is the national data here, the number one answer to obstacles to learning during pandemic and distance learning was distractions at home. All right, 64% of students in the United States said they're just distracted when they're at home, and we all know there's a million reasons why students are distracted at home, but they are, and that makes distance learning difficult. That was not the case in Sonoma County. If you look at the next slide, our students in Sonoma County reported that 71% of them were feeling anxious. And actually, what the, what the full question said was anxious about their future. Um, that they were worried about their future as a result of the pandemic and quite possibly the fires. At Healsburg High School, the report was, the number was 74%, so we actually outpaced the county in, in terms of students' anxiety around their futures. Because of pandemic, because of the trauma that they lived through. And if you think about it, I have a son who's a senior. Our seniors have lived through wildfire after wildfire after wildfire and flood, and now pandemic. There's not been a year when there wasn't some seemingly life-changing crazy event that happened. Um, you know, I think back to my years in high school. The only thing that I can remember that was remotely close was the Loma Prieta earthquake in 1989. Um, I watched it on TV. I felt it. I was in Santa Rosa, but it never did. I feel like my life was in danger. Uh, and yet kids, kids in Sonoma County have felt that year on, year on year. Um, you can continue, Karen. This is a breakdown of Sonoma County students and the obstacles that they ranked in terms of being significant for them during distance learning, and you can see that by ethnicity, students who are Hispanic or Latino or Black African-American have significantly higher obstacle loads in their own minds versus Asian or white students, uh, within Sonoma County. So again, the, the anxiety and the obstacles that students encounter are, are racialized, as reported on this Youth Truth Survey. Um, the, the reporting prior, uh, in Sonoma County to how kids felt connected to their school before COVID was 50%, 47% or so felt that they were connected, and that shrunk to 30%. That on its own is not a surprise, right? When we're not in class and we don't have kids together, uh, with their teachers, in their clubs, on their teams, uh, in the lunchroom, obviously, they're not gonna feel as connected. 71% of students reported significantly feeling affected by COVID-19. And in terms of just their base friendships, right? So nearly every student is, is suffering on some level from some isolation issues. This one, and the next few slides, uh, can be startling. So we start with this slide. How much has COVID-19 outbreak affected you? And you look at just about 20% said significantly. All right, and the next slide, from those who reported significantly, shows, Karen, you go to the next one. Uh, you can go to the next one again, sorry. Um, that, of that 20% who reported significant impact by COVID-19, 23% of them reported that they had had significant thoughts of suicide because of COVID-19. And then when you move on to fire impact for kids in Sonoma County, it was 21% again. So when we look at this, a lot of the talk has been around grades. And grades are symptom. I, I, I believe that. But they are by no means the main issue here. The main issue is that we have students who are suffering from a lot of mental health and social emotional well-being, um, issues. You know, and I think as adults, everybody on this meeting can talk about their own anxiety, their own diminished capacity, their own, you know, we all struggle day-to-day to function and as high a way as we do in normal circumstances. Um, yet we have an adult point of view that knows at some point, this is all gonna end. While we may have a new normal, it's gonna stop. I don't think kids have that same point of view. And then you, 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 you pile on the fire after fire and, and the things that they have lived through. Um, and there's just not a lot of capacity for students to deal with it, let alone on their own, isolated at home. Um, and so I just wanted to highlight some of the things we are doing here. As you can see in the district, we have a lot going on to try to meet the social, emotional well-being, well-being of our students and their needs. I will tell you, while resources are always an issue, I feel like the bigger issue here is getting kids to engage because none of this can happen in person, and that's what they all long for. And there's a tremendous amount of Zoom fatigue, and so we really see a lack of engagement on the part of students and sometimes families because, because of their, they just don't want to do this kind of counseling, uh, via Zoom. So I, I wanted to break down, like I said, grades are a symptom of the mental health issues our kids are, are seeing. And I've highlighted some of the ways that the, uh, mental health issues in Sonoma County, um, played out across ethnicity. This is a breakdown of the grades at Healsburg High in the first progress report. It saddens me to say the second progress report actually hasn't changed a tremendous amount. The grades are largely the same. I haven't broken them down into subgroups, but just on number of Fs and the number of students with Fs, um, not a lot of changes happened from first to second progress report. But looking at the first progress report, we had a total number of 629 Fs. Obviously, a large number of those are kids that have multiple Fs in the, on their grades. But when you break it down by ethnicity, we have our Latino students who are 50, about 57% of our, 57% of our student body who represent 75% of those Fs. White students who are 40% of our student body have only 21% of the Fs. Socioeconomically disadvantaged students, who are about half the student body, are at 70% also. And then you look at special education. Again, special education is overrepresented in terms of the number of Fs there from 10%. And then you look at special education, again, special education is overrepresented in terms of the number of Fs there from ten percent of the student body of eleven percent or so to nineteen percent of the Fs. And so the failure of students in classes is perpetuating inequities that already exist in our community and our schools. But I think it's making it worse and it's not something that I think we can stand by and let happen. Again, thirty nine percent of all high school students at Hillsburg High are failing at least one class as of the first progress report. That's an astounding number, right? You can go to the next slide. Moving forward, we have, you know, the staff are all buzzed. They're discussing all kinds of things. So it's not as if this has fallen on deaf ears. I know teachers at the junior high and high school are working on ideas right now regarding late work, grading practices, essential standards, schedules, instructional practices, interventions and supports. And in the next few weeks, we're going to formalize some plans and develop. And I forgot to mention, Bill, you were going to help me on this presentation. Is there anything you wanted to add about the work being done? I know nothing is finalized yet, but Bill or Chris Miller, if you wanted to jump in here.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I, I just wanted to remind the folks present at the board meeting that the youth truth survey was taken just a month or so into our COVID experience. And now we're, we're in for the long haul. And I think that those stark figures that Chris shared with us about the emotional impact this is having on kids has only been enhanced as the weeks and the months have gone by as we've gone through this. And then secondly, I want to say that our faculty at the high school has been doing a excellent job and not just working hard and being diligent reflecting upon their practices, but also collaborating about what changes we could implement to our current program that would increase student engagement and decrease the number of Ds and Fs. We're looking as, as on the slide, we're looking at having a late work policy, much more flexible for teachers to collect late work throughout the semester from students and give them credit for that. We're asking our departments to look at what I'm calling skinny standards or essential standards. Because we just don't have the amount of time in our Zoom lessons to teach the full scope and sequence in any of our courses. So teachers have to prioritize for standards and really ask the critical questions about what students absolutely need to retain in the sequence of courses through high school. We're looking at some changes for the second semester to our schedule, potentially having more asynchronous stick time on a, on a scheduled meetings, giving students more time to just complete assignments and work collaboratively together. We're not looking at a big schedule overhaul because our faculty feels, and I do agree with them, that having a dramatic change in the middle of the year might not get the results we're seeking. And then I've got to compliment our counseling team and the folks in our support agencies for really working hard on intervention strategies for students who are struggling. We've seen a decrease across the board of students' performance, which is obviously concerning. But we've also seen a dramatic decrease in certain students' performance, meaning they were passing their classes, maybe struggling to a certain extent, needing some minor interventions and supports. And right now we see failures across the board with some of those students. So we are really being much more aggressive with our strategies with the students, including home visits, including changes in schedules, including weekly counseling sessions with our onsite counselors or offsite counselors. And once again, I want to thank Kelly and Ever for their diligence and working with these students.
Yeah, I would echo. I know the counselors are on overdrive. They're, they're doing a ton to support kids right now. And I, I see their cars here late every day and I'm very grateful for them and the way they reach out to help.
I was just going to say from the junior high, we're looking at some of the very similar things. And I, I won't repeat what, uh, what, what Bill said, a lot of this, the work is very similar at the junior high. I did just want to reiterate the importance of, of, of teachers in this planning process. And a lot of the ideas really are coming from our teachers who also recognize the need for, for some changes. And the vast majority of teachers are, are behind some, some of the changes that we're proposing for, for the second semester.
Thanks. Thank you, Bill and Chris. Go to the next slide, Karen. So I wanted just to be honest here, our system is not meeting our students' needs and it's perpetuating inequities, as I said. So really it's broken. We have a broken system. Yet in our broken system, we're continuing to hold students accountable in the same way. And really what this is going to yield is us hijacking their futures. A, a student in high school with a failing grade can become credit deficient, could lose their, their opportunity to go to university. They, there's all kinds of, even in junior high student who starts failing classes that wasn't doing that before, that's already suffering under the strain of the pandemic and having lived through the traumatic wildfire, starts to see themselves as a failure. And that mental health issue that they already had starts augmenting and growing as a result. And so I really think it is, it is on us and, and our staff. And, and, and I know we have the staff and the teachers to do it and I know they're already engaged in it. But I want to say, you know, we can't hijack kids' futures because a pandemic happened. So we must reflect, we must adapt and we must change. And, and I'm, I'm really grateful for the teachers that attended the convening and have led some of those conversations. At the high school, that was Drew Kimpjak, that was Jamie Atwood and Kelly Mace. And at the junior high, Patricia Murphy, Gloria Ortado and Bethany Carlson were present along with, with Bill and, and Chris and then myself and Aaron Fender, Diane Conger. So I, I want to, well, actually I'm not going to stop here. I'm going to, we're going to shift focus just for a minute. I want to talk about some ways that our schools are building community and we're going to run through it really quickly. There's a lot going on that I didn't even know when we started collecting information. First, we have conversations in common coming. This is a countywide response to sort of the Black Lives Matter movement that really exploded over the summer. And what it is, is it's, it's a collective book reading and joint discussion throughout the county on the same day. We are purchasing this book called Dreamers for every elementary school student at both the elementary campuses. And we'll be participating in this with many of the districts in the county. So really excited about that. Continuing along, you know, I'm not going to read through everything, but you can see here at Hillsburg Elementary and Fitch Mountain, there's been a number of community building things that are all happening virtually. The, the next one is this week. Tomorrow night, we have our gratitude Zoom evening. So encourage you guys to take a look at that. And go to the next one, Karen. More lunchtime activities happening with various teachers at, at Fitch Mountain. So you can see there's something almost every day for, for kids to do and connect with one another socially and in a fun way. Hillsburg Junior High has spirit days. You see Dia de los Muertos. I know the leadership class is really active, student ambassador program, et cetera. Clubs are going on, the Kermit Club. GSA continues to meet and is strong as ever. We have the various clubs that are happening at the high school. Can we go back one? I just want to highlight a new one, you, young empowered women. That's, that's one that's been started by our ag teacher Riley Dale.
Nice. Yes.
Continuing. We have, here's our class advisors. They're holding class meetings and trying to get activities going. I know we had a drive-in movie that was supposed to happen and then the rain came and the equipment can't be out in the rain. So Lion King didn't get shown in November, but they're working on Elf sometime in December, hopefully with rain withstanding. The Hounds Bark Newspaper is just published and you can find it online. Lots of great stories there led by Mr. Worf, who's in his first year teaching journalism for us. Keep going up. Went too far. FFA has been continuing. In fact, there was just an FFA event outside tonight and they are very active in getting kids involved in things. And it's great to see them build community in a virtual safe way. And then finally we have lunch bunch groups that are happening at the elementaries and the junior high. So I wanted to put that statement back on there. It is the kids who are going to lose if we can't change and adapt and better meet their needs. You know, I really feel strongly as superintendent to schools, we don't just come and present them with an education and the opportunity to learn. We make sure they learn. No parent wants their kid to come here just to have the chance, but to actually walk away realizing their dreams and getting an education. And so it behooves us to reflect and to adapt and change. And I'll leave that there and open it up for questions from the trustees or any public comment that might be there. Karen, do you have any public comments?
I can't see my chat right now. I have to actually take this off the screen. So just what's okay, let's see. I do not have any public comments.
Any, any questions or discussion from the board?
I, I have a question. I'm, I'm curious to know if there and maybe the principal, they don't have to respond, but this might be a question for the principals. Are there things the teachers feel like they need that we could be providing for them that would enable them to be doing maybe some of the things that are working in other classrooms or other departments as they've kind of collaborated and, and hear maybe some teachers that are having some real success. And that might just be something that we, you know, if there is anything that would be something that we'd want to address. I, I know that there have been things in the past, but I just want to keep asking that question. I think this is Mike's typical question, but you know, other opportunities that things we can provide. That'd be my first question. I've got a couple others, but I'll let any other board members chime in.
Chris Miller, do you want to jump in or you want me to jump in?
Go for it.
Well, our teachers need time to work together to reflect on their practices and learn from each other. We used our November second professional development day as an exclusively teacher to teacher training day. And it was everything from looking at essential standards and reflections on pacing in, in a Zoom instructional model to technologies that used over the Zoom platform and what different software programs can best engage students. So one of the discussion points we're having at the high school is how do we carve out some more time? Again, during the students asynchronous time when they should be working on their own, hopefully they are, for teachers to collaborate together. We find that we have a lot of internal expertise and we just need to enhance the ability to put those folks together to come up with strategies, ask, ask tough questions of each other and reflect upon each other's practices.
Yeah. And I think in terms of, of stuff, so to speak, in terms of like instructional technology that has been needed to, to help students be successful and help teachers be more successful during this time. We've been able to provide what, what teachers have asked for. And I know we're, we're continuing to do that as we go through and, and continue to find additional, additional needs. We too took our professional development time to, to address some of these issues. And we believe we have some, some potential changes to the schedule, which would allow even, even more time for teachers to collaborate.
Yeah, Jamie, to, I think your question was making a point. When we were at the convening and we were meeting as a Hillsburg team, I told the staff, they're like, there's nothing off the table, right? Whatever we need to make you and our students be successful, you know, we're going to find a way to make it happen. So, um, you know, we've talked with Hatta and we negotiated extra screens for teachers so they could have two teachers so they can see their presentation and watch kids on Zoom. Did take a while to get the second screen and I think there's a whole batch of teachers who want more. So we have to order more and everything's backordered, but, and things like docu cams. I walked through a Fitch Mountain class last week where the teacher finally just got their docu cam and what a difference that made for them. So things like that, absolutely. And we'll continue to engage in those conversations, whatever we need to do. I know line, I see Linus on the, on the Zoom and I know you're doing an art distribution of supplies next week for students. So, you know, we're doing, we're not next week because it's Thanksgiving, but sometime soon. But we're trying, we're trying to address those issues as we can identify them.
And I would just like to say too, I mean, I absolutely, and I, I'm not kidding around when I say I recognize the incredible stress that the teachers are under trying to do this digital learning. And I know because I do it myself all day long. And it is a, it's exhausting and it's, it's sometimes even hard to find the words to explain what it's like. With that being said, I, I think the teachers, we have to think outside the box too. We have to think about what can we be doing different to enable these kids to make it to the next semester and the semester after that. And I don't know, I know that there are a lot of things that, you know, we can't, I can't ask you to do, that you have to maybe do on your own. I just hope that, you know, I know you're digging deep, but continue to dig deep and look for opportunities to just change our teaching. We get so, we know it works for us, but it's some of times it's not working for the kids, especially in this environment. So I just, I'm just kind of maybe beseeching all teachers to just really, what are we going to do for those students that just aren't making it right now? And I, I hope we're all in it for what, whatever it takes. I'm not doubting that you are, but I just, I think we have to, we have to find unusual ways to make it happen and lean on each other. And this, then the teachers that seem to be, seem to be striking a chord with, with kids. What can we glean from them and, and change in our own practices that allow us to, to keep those kids just putting one step and, you know, one foot in front of the other and being successful and building that success back again. It just takes unusual choices by us as teachers. So I'm in there with you and I, I guess I just ask, I just ask that you continue to, to do what it takes. Right? And I thank you.
So I have a question. Having read the article in the paper about this convening that took place and that Rancho Cattani High School had changed their schedule and that they weren't having the same effects that we're having. I'm wondering if we're looking at that kind of a schedule for the second semester. Having experienced going to school with a, a six week block and realizing how beneficial that was for me. I'm really wondering if, if we can't look at what Rancho Cattani is doing since they're being successful and emulate that.
I, I think there's discussions happening around the schedule, things that, you know, we have seven classes, they have six. So there's, there's a little bit of difficulty there, but there are ways to make it work. I know those possibilities are being discussed. You know, obviously no decisions have been made yet. But it was, it was interesting to see that their data had, they've actually improved the number of Fs that they had from last year, right? So
Right.
And a lot of
I saw that.
To the schedule. So that was, that's an interesting piece and it makes sense. It's less for kids to deal with, you know, they're, they're dealing
Well, and it's evidently daily contact.
Yeah, that helps.
With your, with your teacher. And it appears to me that it would lessen the stress on the teachers to not have to.
That's the number, that's the number of kids.
Yeah.
So I, I'm real concerned about, about in your presentation, Chris, that you when we're talking about the results of that survey and the the effects of the fires, the flood, the pandemic on our kids. That what we're doing is not working and I'm, I'm not convinced that learning how to do a Zoom class better is what we need to be focusing on. I think that maybe as Jamie said, thinking outside the box, I think that we have to really all of our lives are upended and they're changed dramatically and and I don't know that we're ever going to go back to what used to be. So I, I, I'm concerned that, that tweaking around, it feels like tweaking around the edges to me. That it's not a change.
I hear you and it, it kind of brings to mind Einstein's famous quote that doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results is the definition of insanity, right? So we, we definitely need to look at new and different ways to be able to reach the kids where they're at. I, I agree with you and, and not just tweak around the edges. So that, and that's the nature of the conversations we're having.
Good.
Will anything be in place before the end of the first semester? I mean, what are we looking at with these kids?
No, that's the hope. My understanding, Chris and Bill, you can nod or thumb up is that in the next, you know, obviously we don't have next week, but in the first two weeks of December to really nail some different agreements across staff so we can have some systemic change.
That was, that was my question on the, the slide that talks about the six things late work rating. Well, that was, that was my question on the, the slide that talks about the six things late work, reading practice, essential standards, et cetera. Um, my, my question that I made. Um, I made notes of what are the timelines? Um, you know, I, I know there, there's ideas we're working on. What is the plan? What is the timeline set? We're going to know this by this. We're going to have some decisions, meeting, et cetera. Um, you know, what does that look like? I, I agree with, um, obviously with Jamie and with Judy, um, and you guys can't leave. Um. We need to look at something that the, the Rancho Cattani, um, is a great, I mean, we, you know, we send kids to college, they're doing Zoom, they're taking three classes. And they're more mature, better prepared, et cetera. Um, maybe it's something we should look at and then. Um, my understanding is that, and we're hearing from teachers and say, hey, you know, that may not be such a bad, a bad idea, but obviously that has to be discussed and planned out. Um. I, I have. The data is disturbing. Um, to me, I suspect to others as well. Um. And I, I look at. What did we, you know, I, I asked, what are we going to do? And I guess that's where we're at now. Um, but I, but before we get there, I want to go back to, um. I think what Jamie began to say is, you know, our, our teachers are doing a great job. They're working their fannies off to do the best they can do. I want to congratulate our superintendent. Um, because when he noticed this in Heelsburg, he waved the flag, if you will, uh, jumped up and down, got some other superintendents involved, asked them what was going on. Um, and it, you know, turned into a, a county summit or whatever we're calling it. Um, and, and also to the administrative team, to Bill, uh, Chris Miller, um, or elementary principals as well. But also to bring in their teams together to begin to solve this. Um, we don't want to snip around the edges. It may be, you know, there's. It's an old book from long ago and I'm looking on my shelf, I don't see it. Um, it's called, if it ain't broke, break it. Um, this is broke. So let's break it, figure out what we need to do. I, I mean, it. All I can say is, um, I went to Mr. O'Connor's class over here a few weeks ago, zoomed in and one of the kids said, um, DL sucks. And DL sucks. So we have to figure out and y'all have to figure out and do it in, and I, I don't know what the budget is. Mr. Superintendent, but quite honestly, I don't care. I really don't care and I don't know how we do it. Um, but I know you're creative. I'm, I'm seeing, uh, W O D O on the. On the, uh, my zoom screen here and Debbie, find the money. Um, because whatever we have to do to make this work for our kids. Uh, we gotta do this and we gotta do it now. Secondly, um, and this, this whole intersectionality, if you will. Uh, but I'm looking at the title of this thing, it's equity and school culture update. Um, I see a few things in it that are addressing equity. Um, I would certainly like to see more where the discussion's going on. It's not something we can put aside. That doesn't seem to be the focus of this item, but it really needs to be because that in part is reasons that we have disparities in the success. Um, of our different group, basically of our white and brown kids. Um, and we can't do that. That has to be addressed and not just about doing things, but about having those conversations. Um, the dreamers book at the elementary school, I think is great. I haven't read it, but I'm hoping it's great. Um. But that's one of the few things I see on this dealing directly with equity. We need to have that. We need to talk about institutionalized racism that we have in our system and we do, we're not unique. Um, we do, um, and we have to address that. I believe if we take that on and, and. We have to figure out how we can do the, the structural stuff as well, but there's that internal stuff. Um, where kids that aren't feeling well. That kids that are looking at what does my future bring? Um, I, I think all of that brought together, I'm hoping, I believe, I truly believe that if we address those and I know it's a big, uh, you know, it's not going to happen overnight. But it's a big bag to carry, if you will, but I absolutely believe that our superintendent. Our principals, our teachers, our support staff, um, the administrative wing, if you will, of, of the, of the district can do this. I really believe we can. Um, so let's do it. And that's all, leave it there. Please do it.
Mike, yeah, I just want to echo that because I, you know, I'm looking at that data. First of all, Chris, I want to thank you for bringing that data forward because I think the greatest equity work is based on data. And, um, there are some huge disparities in the achievement gaps between Latino students and, and our white students and it's super concerning to me. I'm really feeling the sense of urgency and. And anxiety over what doors are going to be closed to our students if we don't do something. You know, soon and, um, different. And so, you know, I too read the article about Rancho Cattani and was, you know. Like really excited about the possibility of just really changing up our, our schedules to see if we can replicate those kinds of outcomes. Because I'm really super concerned about. Just the disparity in these, in these, um, achievement gaps. And the number of Fs that our Latino students are facing, 75% of the Fs are from our Latino students. That is a huge concern. And so, um, you know, like you said, Chris, I, I said this on my half presentation. It is the definition of insanity to keep doing the same thing and expecting different outcomes. So I really feel like we have to break this mold. And we have to do it quick because our, our kids need this. I mean, we are, we are allowing doors to close in their face if we don't. And it breaks my heart because, um, I know that we all want more for our students and better for our students and we believe that they can succeed. But we have to look at how we can do this differently so that we can provide the opportunities that they need. That's the true equity work and, um. We're all passionate about equity and which I'm super proud of and appreciative of. But that means we have to act and I'm really encouraging our administrators and teachers to really look at this seriously. Really dive into that data and looking at our, our structures and, um. And creating new schedules that perhaps would be more, you know. Reading the Rancho Cattani article about how they're getting instruction five days a week. Five days a week and they're seeing their teachers five days a week and they're getting support five days a week. That makes a difference. And, um, to do it for three classes versus seven or four classes versus seven makes a big difference. And, you know, um. I, I really just, I'm so nervous about what's going to happen for our students if we don't act quickly.
I can say, it's, you know, like I said, expect us back in December at the board meeting, talking about some things that we've come to agreement on and, and what we're going to be doing. You can expect an action plan then.
And I think you're seeing a pretty unified message from the board around this. And, um, I mean, I. In addition to everything everyone said, I feel like we've, we've really made some notable strides in. Um, narrowing the achievement gap over the last few years. And it's, it is even more disconcerting to see these, uh, the current situation. Like, because we're, it, we're just so hard to lose ground. That's been hard fought by everybody, by teachers and administrators and everybody. Um, so, uh, yeah, very strong message from the board here to. Like let's, to do whatever we need to do to make this better. Um, it's especially. Yeah, it's especially, um. Urgent now because clearly the state is moving in the wrong direction with COVID. We were really hoping to maybe be. You know, ready with a hybrid model and to move on that as quickly as we could. Once the county was ready. Now we don't know when that's going to happen. It's really even more uncertain, I think now. And so this focus is. Is not, it's not just something that's going to go away in a few weeks. It really, we need to be addressing the distance learning head on. For the foreseeable future. So. Thank you to the board for being clear.
It, it does. Thank you for saying that. It, I, I meant to. Just say publicly, you know, obviously we're not going to be reopening in, after winter break in January. It's not, those conditions won't be there. Um. I don't anticipate it happening in January at all, probably.
It would have to be a miracle.
Yeah, so we will be, we'll be talking about that as a board in December also and setting a new resolution and another date and we, we have negotiating to do. I, I personally, um. Would like to have it set on metrics and science, you know, so we're not just throwing darts at dates, um, but that when it is safe and sustainable to reopen, um, that we do so. Um, and so that's, that's how the district will be proceeding and, and. But yeah, we will not, we're not going to reopen on December or January 5th, I think is when we come back. That's, that's not going to happen. We'll be communicating out to parents shortly about that, so.
And I know, I mean, I think in the back of our minds is that, well, the distance learning will be over at some point soon and that soon just hasn't happened.
No.
And.
That is desperate for, including all the teachers on there.
I know, I know.
The joy has been robbed out of education.
Out of everything. I know, out of everybody. Nobody signed up for this.
Nope.
No, I'm just curious. Ha- has there been a conversation about, um. The Rancho Cattani article in the paper at the sites? Just curious.
Or that, that, that.
Yes.
That structure?
Yeah.
Yes, and similar structures, yes.
Good.
I'm just curious, is it gaining any momentum? Is there excitement around that? I mean, that's a, that's a great.
I don't, I don't know where we are with it. Or if the principals even know where we are with it yet. I don't know if they've had time with the whole staff to really discuss it.
Chris, okay, if I chime in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there is, and the rest of the board, I, I, one, I hear you loud and clear and two, I do want to. Give you some sense of reassurance that we're, we are having those, those dialogues about, um, substantial changes to what we're doing, including, uh. A schedule change. I do. Wish the process was able to move a little faster to be quite honest with you, but it is, you know, it is part of a, an agreement that we have to reach with our, with our team. About how to move forward. So it's essential that we're respectful of that process. I think that you will see some, some changes in the right direction in the near future when we talk in December. Um, our faculty had a meeting today. Um, to talk about three specific agreements we're, we're wanting to, um, land on. And hopefully that will be the impetus for some. Some immediate change and would lead to some changes for second semester scheduling too. Uh, we've had a lot of discussions going back to March. Of last year about potentially coming back with a three by three or a four by four or a three by four type of schedule and those, those discussions are ongoing. But I, I do need to be honest with you, you know, it's. We're not serving the population of our students in the way that we would like to see. We're seeing too much. Failure, we're seeing too much disengagement. We know we need to make the change, but just, um. As all of us have experienced, you know, cha- change is difficult and collective change is even more difficult. So. It's a process and we're very much engaged in that process.
And there's no blame, right? I mean, data is just, it's what we do with the data that's, you know, that's important. And so I'm really hoping that we're going to be acting on that data and that we're going to be creating. Different structures that, that is not more of the same, right? Because I do, I do fear that if it's not. Drastically different than what we're doing now, we're not going to get drastically different results. And so I really, really am hoping that. Um, we can collaboratively create schedules that are very different in hopes of getting different results.
Yeah, I just want to echo, there's, this, this is not about pointing fingers. This is art, like I. Incredibly hard and, you know, they're, they're encountering their own obstacles, obviously. In fact. The, the contract you approved on consent for the counseling services, we actually with, with, with that organization negotiated for staff to be able to go sometimes if, if needed. So we recognize how hard this is for everybody. Um, we're not blaming, you know, if we're going to blame, you blame COVID and maybe a little bit of PG&E because of the fires, right? But that, that's where the blame hits. Um, so I, I, I do want all the teachers that are in here to, to, to hear that loud and clear that nobody is blaming at all. So.
And I'll, I will echo that. I, I totally agree with that. We're, in no way is it a blame game whatsoever. However, I will say it's our responsibility. So. Regardless, it, it's, we are responsible for being able to make the change, right? As educated, as educators and educated adults to be able to pivot. And figure out, okay, what do, how are we going to make this happen? How are we going to make this happen? So certainly no blame whatsoever, but I do think we have a responsibility. So. I, I would just throw that out there too.
And I think we have, we have the team to take it on.
Uh, I, I know we do. That, there's no question about that. I know for sure. I think that we could be setting some. Major records and some amazing standards. I mean, I have no doubt that we don't, we have the raw skills. Um. I just want to push it, just try to encourage everyone to push it along and, and whatever time we can give the teachers if we need to. Do, again, as, as, um. As district administration or as, you know, the board, what can, what can we do to give teachers more time to, to make? Those, those big changes. I, I don't know. We got to be flexible too, for sure.
Absolutely. Um, so expect some, some answers and plan of action in December. Um, I do want to move us along. I did not anticipate it would be 7:45 already.
Yes.
We are, I mean, as distance learning is hard and we are much slower as a board on Zoom. I can tell you that, like, the pacing is not as good as it usually is. Um, if fast is good, I guess. So. Anyway, so the next item up is the public hearing for the reopeners, right, Donna?
Yes. So if I had a gavel, I would gavel in the public hearing. Um, and open that to any public comments about the Healdsburg Area Teachers Association Successor Agreement re opener.
And this is the time when, yeah, if you have a public comment about the successor agreement or negotiations, you would. Chat Karen.
And Chris, just to be clear, this is not hybrid learning agreement. This is. This is our, our annual.
This is the annual reopeners. Yeah, so this is just contract and salary. So what we're, what essentially is being reopened by Hada. Um, is provisions of the contract and salary negotiations for next year on.
Right.
And we're going to negotiate the reopening or the. All the distance learning stuff before.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say that as a public comment.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure it's clear what this public hearing is about. And it's about the, you, the, the annual. Negotiations.
Correct.
Um, so Karen, I'm sorry.
Submitted, yeah.
Exactly, about the.
Okay, so, um, comments. So Chris?
I was just going to say, we, you know, we're, we're ready and willing to, to negotiate. We have a date, December 10th. We've, we've, uh, confirmed. Um, but that the district does, um. Insist that we negotiated the reopening, um, to in person prior to engaging in salary and benefits for next year. Um, not that those aren't important, they absolutely are, um, and they are a priority, but we do need to get a plan in place for when we can safely and sustainably open schools. Before we move on to things for next year.
I, I will add that we are going to keep comments to three minutes. And, and overall comments to 20. I don't know that that'll matter now, but I'm gonna say that now.
Okay, so I have Robin Doherty that would like to make a comment.
Um, so the contract coming up is for, it's an opening, it's a, a new three-year contract. So my public comment is that we need to have wages and health benefits that attract teachers to our district. And we need wages and health benefits that are competitive so that we can find and keep teachers. And that is my greatest concern.
Thank you. That was well within the three minutes. Thank you.
All right.
Next.
I don't believe we have any other public comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
So, um, I'm going to now gavel out the, uh, public hearing on this matter. And we will then, sorry, I'm like totally losing track here. We are then going to move into the actual agreement re opener and the action for the board to accept the re opener.
So I, I do want to acknowledge, um, that there was a, uh, an error made in the backup material. So the cover page for this item said that the board was going to approve the Hadda reopeners. The board actually doesn't have the jurisdiction to approve Hadda's reopeners. It's, it's an acknowledgement or an acceptance of them, basically. Um, the board does approve the district's reopeners, but those were approved last, I think, March. Um, so we did include the district's reopeners just for everybody to be able to see those again, um, but those are not. Part of the action item today. The action the board will be taking is simply accepting the letter that Hadda has submitted. That's part of the packet.
Right, not. Necessarily accepting the terms, but accepting the letter.
This.
For anyone watching who's wondering, like that was easy, right now.
Yeah, no, you, you, you can't really.
Okay, so, um, so that, this is, it is an action.
This is an action item, yes.
I'll note that we, uh, accept the, uh, Hadda, uh, successor agreement sunshine letter.
Real quick, um, uh, Ally, Alcazare wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, please.
Karen, do you have the agreement or the sunshine letter that you can share on your screen?
It'll take me a minute, but I can. Just find.
Okay, it's actually okay because I'm just going to speak to, I mean, people all have the board packet, so I'm just going to speak to a couple of key points. Um, so good evening. Thank you for moving this item forward in the agenda. We really appreciate it with getting back to our families after a conference week and. What feels like 90 days in a work week, uh, with distance learning. So, um, I'll make this brief. You can see your letter before you in the board packet. We're eager to begin our negotiations. Uh, with the district for both our successor contract and our MOU for in-person instruction. Once we receive the reopening plan from HUSD so that we can base our working conditions off of what the plan might be. Um, you might notice we're doing things a bit differently this year. And what's not. And what's not different about twenty twenty in general, so you'll see within the sunshine letter, we've also included our first proposal. And we did this so that we could get to negotiating sooner and, you know, potentially reach an agreement sooner so that we can also stay in our classrooms with our students because we know we have very limited time for instructional minutes with our students. So that is, you know, definitely our priority here. We do miss class when we negotiate, so we want to make sure we're there. We also wish to ensure transparency through this process, so we've included our first proposal. That way, you know, all stakeholders know what we are proposing and what we are asking for. So with that, I'd like to touch on a few key points. At the forefront of our proposal are student-centered items that we understand we have also have a responsibility to our students and doing the best for them that we can. So we've included some student-centered proposal items. And regarding our salary, we are asking to just be brought up to average, not Sonoma County average, but our state average. So today I was thinking about what does that mean to be average and some cinnamon, synonyms are ordinary, typical, moderate and regular. We are asking for our salary to be averaged. According to our J ninety that we received from last year, that our average teacher Sally salary was seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's after at least ten years of employment. So I certainly don't make that income and many of our staff do not as well. The state average for an academic, the academic year eighteen nineteen was eighty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. So in one of the most wealthy communities in the state, we are still below state average. So we're not asking for anything crazy. We understand these are challenging times, but we are asking to be average. We're a family-based community, we want to keep our doors open to as many families as possible. That includes our educators. So I'm a Hillsburg alumni, I would love to bring my son here and to be able to stay in Sonoma County, but I have to be able to afford to do it. And that echoes the, the story of so many of our members. I couldn't do it if I wasn't a dual-income employee here. So with our benefits, we wish to be, have a comparable plan to at least what Windsor Unified is offering. Now, more than ever during a global pandemic, we see that proper health insurance is imperative, not only to the safety of ourselves and families, but the community at large. Many members seek insurance from their spouses, employers, or privately purchase on the market because our plan here is not as affordable as those other options or it doesn't provide adequate coverage for our members. Um, one big point I'd like to.
We're at three minutes. Can you summarize?
Sure, I'm sorry, I thought it was, I, I thought it was a presentation, not a public comment. So, um.
Keep going, Al, it's good.
Oh, is it? So are we, is this like the HADA?
I'm the chief negotiator for HADA.
So this is, so well, this is basically your HADA report.
No, this was, sorry, I was told that, I'm sorry, I was told we were supposed to.
Sorry, you're presenting this. Thank you, thank you.
I'm just touching on some items we've included in our sunshine.
Please, please continue, I apologize.
So, um, for curriculum, we have also made curriculum a priority. Hillsburger students have the ability to achieve great success. We have local business owners that are extremely successful, like Christian Solberg, who was a Hillsburg alum, he has mustache and noble folk. We have people that are working as attorneys with the government. We have lots of doctors that have come through Hillsburg. So Hillsburg students have the ability to do whatever they want to do. And so teachers really believe in that, but they have to have a voice when it comes to the implementation and the selection of our curriculum. And we would love to have a seat at that table. So that doesn't mean we'll always have a perfect solution, but we'd like to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the district to ensure the success of our students. We also believe that rigor for our students is imperative, but also understand that this is not a one-size-fits-all model. This has been very apparent as noted in this board meeting about our current educational format. We voiced concerns over the summer about finding the perfect balance of rigor and understanding that the outcome just couldn't be compared to yours prior. And yet here we are. We can't do this alone. We often hear that our students, we know our students best, therefore we wish to seek the professional courtesy of working collaboratively to select and pilot any future curriculum that Hillsburg would like to bring forward. We need to feel supportive so that when we make requests, although they are always possible, we need to ensure that our requests are heard. Not just with curriculum, but with any instructional materials as well. Many and costs, costs that are incurred are out of a teacher's pocket. So we want to make sure that we are working together and, you know, we do think innovatively and we want to make sure we are striking accord with all of our students. As educators, we believe in the whole student, so we have an item there that we would like to open for nurses and counselors, touching on both physical and mental health. No one believes that this is more important than our membership. So as echoed so many times tonight, you know, we know the mental health of our students are, are in, you know, we're all in kind of feelings of despair and, you know, different things going on. Everybody's got COVID or fires affecting them differently, so we understand that too. But we proposed nurses and counselors long before COVID. We proposed this last year, actually. So with the evidence of the youth truth survey, mental health has plummeted in light of the tragedies and challenges in our community. As mentioned in the KSRO interview this week with Santa Rosa City Schools, students are struggling countywide. Chris touched on this earlier and I too wonder how many adults would respond the same way to the students if they were to take that survey. While teachers wear many hats, there is a time when certain situations weren't professional services. We can't always render those services as a teacher. And as Mike noted, we have to find the money. It is critical and it is critical now. We look forward to beginning our negotiations with HUSD and working collaboratively to protect the most valuable asset in our community, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you, and I apologize. I, yeah. Thank you, Ally. Finishing. Okay, so, um, at this, I mean, do we have to officially do, take a, a motion to accept the letter? Is that the?
Yeah, you have to vote.
Do, are there any questions or comments from the board or do I have a motion to accept the opener letter from the union?
So moved.
Again, any final questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you again, Ally. Okay. Now we bounce over to number six, accounting of developer fees.
Of course, number six.
Is that the, am I going in the right order here, Chris?
Good, so it's twelve point one D on your agenda.
Thank you.
So it was right after the board meeting calendar, which will.
Developer fee report.
So Debbie.
Oh, you're muted.
Hi, this is a resolution showing the developer fees from nineteen twenty. These are the fees that we collected and how they were spent. We've been spending developer fees on the portables at HES and we did remove them this year, so that will go away and we won't be spending that in future years. And we did contribute a million dollars towards the new high school gym from the developer fees. And this report is showing that our ending balance is at thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars.
And Debbie, just to be clear with everybody, these are fees that must be spent on capital improvements, right? These.
Facilities, yes.
Facilities, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any questions or concern or do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, Karen?
All right. Trustee Romo Flores?
I.
Trustee Kiff?
I.
Trustee Velazquez?
I.
Trustee Pat Mison?
I.
And President Delray?
I.
Thank you.
And, yeah, because it's a resolution, Vikram does not vote on that, correct?
No, isn't.
Okay, just making sure, okay. Okay. Done, number six, now we're over to seven, we're parts. This is why I got confused.
Heff, Heff will not be here, but Sally just asked me to plug Education Week, so if you haven't been tuning in, you can go to heffschools.com. Lisa Pillanini is a team leader, so if you're going to donate money, donate to Lisa's team, so she wins.
I donated to your team, Lisa.
And you can watch, there's some engaging videos, Donna did a talk about school funding, Arcelly and Ever Flores were featured around school equity. And then tonight was growth mindset with a number of staff and Dr. Bowler. So just a great opportunity to learn about what's going on in the schools and to support Heff, support our kids in our schools through donating, so.
Okay, the funding one wasn't the most exciting, but hopefully people learned some.
It is complicated and you did learn something if you watched it, for sure. Yeah, good job. And thank you, Arcelly, for, for talking, though, honestly and candidly about equity.
Yes, um, and I think Sally is probably at, at the rooftop bar at Harmon drinking the drinks tonight that get donated, the proceeds get donated to half.
Yeah.
Young and yonder, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe. Okay, HADA report.
Hi, thank you. Well, um, I have to report that Hillsburg Elementary, Sun Fifty, two campuses just finished two week of parent teacher conferences virtually. And another profession that was focused on ELD English language development. Planned around ELD English language development.
Oh, Robin, you're, you're.
Trainer did, could not make.
Your connection is.
Vibrating.
Yeah.
Echo. Now you're frozen.
We got ELD, the focus on ELD development, but then you're frozen now, yeah. Oh, there you go, let's see, oh. Now you're muted, let's try again.
Okay, Hillsburg Junior High.
It's like you get like three words in and then it goes underwater.
It might help to have her turn her video off and just do audio.
Is that okay? Try that, Robin. Video off, audio on. No, they give it a moment to kick in, try, try one more time. Oh, now we're not hearing anything.
She messaged me saying country living.
Yes. Yeah, rural.
She said she's going to type a message real quick.
Perfect.
Okay, so let's move on and then we'll go back to her message. Is there a CSEA report?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I thought I missed it. I think you guys moved the agenda around a little bit or something.
A lot.
A lot.
Trying to cook dinner for the family and all that. Anyway, hi, and we had our meeting today. And I said, how's everybody doing? And any, any complaints, any, anything? And they said, no, everything's peachy. And I'm like, okay. That's good, so.
Good leadership.
I'm still getting to know some of the members because I don't know everybody yet, so trying to get around to that with distance learning is kind of hard, but, um, anyway, we're all doing good, we're all working still. Zooming away, a lot of our people are, you know, our parents and stuff are zooming and Maria and I are in the office and I'm excited when the phone rings, excited when somebody shows up. Excited for picture day because we're going to get to see the kids.
Oh, yay.
Oh, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, so they've been coming to pick up supplies at the library. So we see them out the window and we're like, oh, look, there's kids. You know, and especially the sixth graders because we don't know them. So when they come with their parents to get something, I know names, but I don't know faces. So it, it's, it's nice just to see them and we're looking forward to, to picture day on December seventh. So we can actually see them and maybe meet some of them from a distance and let them know who we are and maybe some of the parents that talk to us but don't know who we are either. So otherwise, everything's, everything's good.
I'm imagining these little, you know, young, almost tween teenagers and you guys all like, hi! You know, like all, they're probably like, anyway, very cute.
Yeah, it's, it's fun when the phone rings. We can't wait to see what's happening. Pretty quiet.
Well, thank you. Thank you for getting excited when you see.
We miss them, we miss them just like.
Exactly. Student trustee report.
Hello, guys. Hope everyone's doing well. Uh, I was gonna go into the, um, distance learning and details about that, but we kind of already went over that. And I just wanted to emphasize, like, I agree with everything you said. I think that if there's a way we can make a system where the kids can be motivated and it's easier for the teachers because teachers have it just as difficult, if not more difficult than us, then I think that would be very good. But obviously, it's not going to happen overnight and if we can get as soon as possible, that'd be great. And there are some events going around. The class of twenty twenty-one has set up an event. Senior sunset, so it's going to happen on December eleventh and it's going to be at four thirty and what's going to happen is the seniors are going to meet up in the parking lot and then they're going to have masks on, we're going to make sure that we social distance and stuff, but it's a way that we can interact with our class because it's been difficult to, obviously, over Zoom and we haven't really seen anyone. So this way we can interact with everyone and just feel like we're still in high school rather than trapped at home. And then, um, because the movie night was canceled, we are tentatively rescheduling it to December eighteenth. And we're gonna try, we're setting up a survey for Christmas movies to see who wants to watch what and whoever, whichever movie wins will play and, um.
Gotta be Elf, Vic, come on.
I will vote Elf. But yeah, we're gonna try to set that up. If it rains, obviously, we can't, we're gonna postpone it to spring, but we're gonna try to do that. Yeah, that's all I got today.
Is that the Friday night after finals?
Yeah, it's the last Friday.
Yeah.
So it'll be like a little celebratory, uh, movie.
That's great.
They were praying for a clear night.
Let's hope.
Wow.
Hey Vikram, I just wanted to thank you. Vikram was one of three Hillsburg High School students who participated in a, in an empathy interview and video that was made by SCO around distance learning at that convening. And so Vic, good job, you, you did a great job. I appreciate your willingness to step up and put that time in to advocate for your, you know, your friends and classmates, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was great and the whole video was great, but your part, you were well spoken and very thoughtful, appreciate that.
And it's always so powerful to hear directly from students, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Board of trustees?
Actually, I have had us.
Oh, yes, please, thank you.
Okay, so it says, um, Hillsburg Junior High had a PD day planned around ELD, but the trainer could not make it. Plans changed to a PD reviewing the results of the youth truth survey from April twenty twenty. HHS teachers attended an amazing PD that was run by their colleagues and the PD was run was run menu style and teachers could pick their training via menu. Hada is looking forward to negotiating with the board starting on December tenth. We have a lot to work on this year. Hada is looking forward to receiving the reopening plan from the district so we can begin to negotiate a safe return for all. Hada is wishing everyone a safe and happy fall break, time with your loved ones.
Thank you, thank you, Robin.
And I would just like to say thank you to Robin for giving us the update on the campuses. That's all, it's nice to have again, so, you know, in a, what's going on in the campuses, it's fun to hear, so thank you. Even though it's not really on the campuses, but thanks for that.
Great, okay, so trustees, any reports or any comments, updates? Everybody needs a break or?
Can we do five minutes? I'm nervous we're not going to make nine o'clock.
Yes, I agree.
So five minutes and.
So we reconvened eight sixteen.
Yeah.
Promptly, and I'm going to go scrub some food. From Valet, supporting half. If my family hasn't already eaten at all, which is very possible. One more minute and like scarfing food. So Valet did this special three course menu tonight and then proceeds going to half. So we ordered, oh my God, this is the this is the first course. It's like this whole pokey dish that's a complete meal in itself. Wow, good.
That is really unfair, Donna.
I'm telling you, you just need to go to Valet and order this pokey dish because it is so good with fried avocado. Yeah, and these chips are like. I don't know how they do that, but.
Is Valet doing all week?
No, it was tonight.
Oh.
Three courses for fifty five dollars.
How did I miss that?
I don't know, it was all part of the heft thing.
I missed that.
Should we keep going?
Yes, we should. Absolutely. Eight sixteen, baby. So we are now on to back to twelve one B annual organizational meeting. Can I mute and just still nosh while you go through?
Basically the board saying that next meeting will be our annual organizational meeting, so we have to. Formally take action to declare it.
Arisella, we need to see you or hear you, Aris, or I guess we have a quorum. I don't think she's gonna argue. All in favor. I. There we go. Yeah, there's nothing. I mean, it's a meeting we're having anyway, right? Hey, I'm them. I was eight.
The next one is the board meeting for 2021, so it's just taking action to declare those dates for board for regular board meetings.
I moved it through the board meeting schedule for whatever year that is, twenty one.
Sure, you're not gonna be here.
Judy seconded.
Add a couple more meetings for them.
I know you guys have already done the work to look at holidays and not melding with whatever and all that. Okay, yeah, okay, all in favor. Hey, Arisella, we're gonna be done with the meeting before Arisella gets back.
No.
Twelve to the ACES renewal program plan.
Report, we need to hand it off to Erin. Yeah. I don't know, four more presentations and we've got less than forty five minutes, so we just need to. Abbreviate presentation and discussion after, not saying don't discuss, but. We gotta keep things moving.
Thank you, Chris.
So I think we can keep this one fairly quick. We receive a grant from the California Department of Education in order to partner with the city of Hillsburg. Historically, this year we're also partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. Intended to provide after school care. These have been critical funds, critical programs and partnerships in order to keep. Over a hundred of our kids safe and supported in distance learning while our campuses are closed. So this is a natural cycle every three years, as long as we do what we say we are gonna do in the previous application. We meet all of our deadlines and reporting requirements. Were invited to reapply. This is not a competitive process. What you're seeing before you is really documenting the program. In all years past, this document would have resulted in about a three to three to five page write-up. They changed the template. There are now eleven different sections with multiple prompts in each section. Why this came right now to us, I don't know. Apparently, it was it was last year's cycle of grantees. Actually, it was the first time we had to address this new program plan format, so you've got. Twenty five-ish page document. When we're done, it'll probably end up being about thirty pages. This is a draft. We are not done. We'll continue to work on this. I want to say thank you to the city of Hillsburg staff who've worked very hard on this document with me. We've both done a lot of the writing to capture what we do and what we hope to build in the next three years. So we'll continue to work on this. It is due to the CDE on December eighth. If it looks good, meets kind of minimum requirements, then we'll put our actual formal application, which is. Very bureaucratic in nature, just numbers and kind of school codes and all that. That will be due the end of January, so this is not an approval item. You're not approving anything here. It's just a chance for the board to reflect and provide any information. Anything that they would want to see in the final document. If we don't have time tonight, I'm happy to have a conversation with any of you one on one or you can email me if you've got any questions. But if you did want to say anything tonight about the program plan, any questions, any input? Go ahead.
So really. Let me just sum it. The essence of the program doesn't change, but the paperwork to get the funding and whatnot has just.
Yeah, they want a much more exhaustive description of what we do.
Okay, okay. Sorry for you.
Yeah.
About that, yeah.
I I read this, it's very thorough and I'll be honest with you, I'm very impressed. So one with the program, but also the fact that you had, I'm looking at twenty seven pages or something, but but thank you for providing this.
And it is, I mean, it it's amazing how critical, how more critical it has become as part.
Absolutely.
The day count, so.
And I will say, we are slotted for the December meeting to celebrate the successes of the city and our partnership with them. We're gonna bring some of the staff that have been working with the hundred of our kids that are at the Fos Creek Community Center every single day. So we can celebrate their successes as we look forward to knowing in January that we'll probably still need and even further on. In months to come, the critical support they're providing for our families, so kids who have working parents have a safe supportive environment to be in.
So, so I know that they had just anticipated funding through December.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Thanks, Judy. So I'm gonna be completely honest, transparent. One of the reasons we're celebrating in December. Is that they are going to be going out in another fundraising campaign. You saw in the consent agenda, the grant that we get for this full program. Is right around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You can imagine they've got forty five staff running just at the ACES, pardon me, at the community center right now in order to operate. In order to be open from seven thirty in the morning until about five thirty, they need two staff members in the morning and two staff members in the afternoon to cover it. Plus organizational and management, so it's a drop in the bucket, this grant, to what it's costing the city to run this. And they have not asked the district for more money. This is not coming from district funds. The city and Quotasone Hillsburg have raised the money. So they're gonna be doing another fundraising effort starting here in the next week or so. You know, we we gave them the definitive, this is gonna last longer than any of us ever wanted. So I know Quotasone and the city is gonna be doing another fundraising effort. Thanks for bringing that up, Judy.
Wow.
Well. Please convey my thanks. It is amazing that those kids have a safe place to be.
It it really is amazing what they're doing with very little time, very little training. It's impressive, you know, our our staff is trying to support as much as possible. We had a conversation just the other day with our. Elementary school psychologist and our behavior support specialist to try to work out some wrinkles. In some of the positive behavior and intervention supports that we can bring, but they're doing a great job.
Great, okay, so no action here, correct?
No action, and like I said, if you if you if you see anything in the plan or you wish it were added or have any questions, feel free to give me a ring or email me. And I'm happy to talk more offline.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, item twelve to D Hillsburg High School new courses for twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two. What year am I?
Okay, thank you. I just need to add that it's getting so late that I just set off the office alarm, so if.
Does the police come?
Please show up and I have to present myself as a non-threatening citizen. I hope you can all understand.
Got your back, Bill.
Okay. Anyway, I wanted to, we're gonna start with our. AP Environmental Science. Proposal for a first read was put together by Patrick McDowell, but it's gonna be presented tonight by Andrew Kepiak, who's our science department chair.
Thank you so much for introducing me, Mr. Holiday. Mr. Van Hoofel and trustees, I want to talk to you about the idea of having AP Environmental Science. Right now presently at Hillsburg High School. We have three AP offerings for advanced placement offerings for science. We have AP Biology, which is also taught by Mr. McDowell. AP Chemistry and AP Physics, which is taught by myself. The reason we want to install the AP Environmental Science courses is twofold. Number one, first and foremost, we want to give. And offer more AP offerings to our students. The second one is by only having biology every year. The number of students that would be in that biology class doesn't get as big or as robust as it could be because. They're always trickling in the same course. So we're looking at offering AP Environmental Science, which will rotate every other year, just like we do right now with environment, with AP Physics and AP Chemistry. So the purpose of AP Environmental Science would require students to identify and analyze natural and human-made environmental problems. Evaluate the risks associated with those problems and examine alternative solutions for resolving or preventing those problems. It's an interdisciplinary topic embracing geology, biology, environmental studies, environmental science, chemistry and geography. Students would have to have some sort of fundamental background in biology and chemistry, so this course offering would be primarily geared towards. Juniors and seniors, but I know that based on past experience, if there is a sophomore that has shown academic, you know, rigor and desire. We have let those students into those courses. In in the past. So that is my hope that we'll be able to offer AP Environmental Science next year or I'll. Yeah, either next year or the year after. Like I said, it's that every other year, not sure of the rotation just yet. I will take your questions now.
Real quick, I just want to say, as your director of curriculum and instruction, I am stoked about this. I used to teach this class when I was a high school teacher. It is an amazing course. It, you know, environmental science for our students in this day and age. It's a class that tends to be more accessible in terms of AP courses. I think it's the right thing to do to rotate it. So I'm really personally excited about this, not only as a former teacher, but as the director of CNI, so this this is. A good thing for our kids.
It seems really appropriate considering that. The environment right now is critical.
Yeah. Now, it sounds nothing.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great class. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you to Mr. McDowell, good idea.
I read I read the framework, it's great. This is exciting. Good for you guys.
Choice is always great, so thank you for offering more choices.
Okay, so this is an information discussion and will it come back on the consent next month? Excellent, okay.
And Drew, thank you for hanging in so late.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And a preemptive thank you to Chef also for being on.
Well, we've already established that Chef doesn't sleep, so we don't have to thank him as much as the other teacher presenter.
But he could be cooking.
Anyway. Chef Corcino, as I mentioned earlier, has added layers and layers of enhancements to our culinary program as CTE offerings since he arrived. And he last year brought forward. The cuisines of the Americas. Course that we were piloting this year and this is the follow-up to that, which is his global cuisine proposal. So thank you, Chef Corcino.
And thank you for having me all back. Once again, I'll keep this brief. The curriculum kind of mirrors exactly what you guys approved last year. A multi-unit kind of tour of the world. This all kind of goes back to replacing the Global Table Academy. We discontinued the Global Table Academy, but we didn't want to lose. The the value that we had with the course material and that was alternating global cuisine with American regional cuisine. So we have forty five students over two courses currently in American regional cuisine. Even though we're doing it distantly, it's going extremely well. We just made Philly cheese steaks a couple of weeks ago and highly successful. We can, we can totally do this course online if necessary as well, but it's a it's a real global tour. And the real aim for this entire course is not just to improve the culinary skills, but to to reach two types of students. We have the students who want to go into culinary pastry and hospitality and fan that flame and continue that forward. With kind of a unofficial. Four-course sequence, but then also just our students who want to be, you know, more worldly. Who want to learn more about food and culture, who have a passion for history, but then we can tie that in with food as well. I like to really bring into a course like this a lot of my own travel addiction of going around the world, bringing back things. Last year we did a unit on global cuisine. I had just gotten back from Morocco and we were cooking a tagine. And I had a scarf and everything and people were trying it on and having a good time. So I was really able to connect both history and culture in with the practice of cooking and eating food. Questions?
Sounds horrible.
I was just gonna ask where I sign up.
I don't like food at all, so it's just, I don't even understand.
We only went over to your little little place over there, what, five times?
Now, this sounds awesome. If you need any capana spice from Namibia, you let me know.
Oh, I will do.
There you go. This sounds great.
I want to echo and kind of make sure we point out too that Chef Garcia takes real, not only the food, but. The geography, understanding the culture. I want to echo and kind of make sure we point out too, that Chef Garcia takes real, not only the food, but the geography, understanding the culture. Understanding why and how foods change and helping kids understand their own food and cultural heritage. And I've seen him do it with our kids and they, they just understand the planet better. They understand geography better. And it's not just about making food from around the world, but the historical geography, understanding themselves, their family, their history. Really, really is a big part of what he does with our kids as well.
The deal. It's great.
You, you said much better than I was going to say. I think this is great, food obviously, but also the cultural. And it, you know, ties right into our ethnic studies that we're, we're, you know, hoping to employ very soon. So hats off to you, Chef. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Or whatever else you call them.
Taster.
Yeah, I was going to say the board, all volunteers to be tasters when we're all back in person.
Come back.
Only two at a time.
That's now, not for tasting.
We're not going to be, it's not a board issue.
Okay, so again, both of these courses will be brought back on the consent agenda next month. Any last questions?
No, I just want to say how exciting it is that even with the, you know, the small, sweet high school that we have, we keep adding and adding. And it's fun to see that enthusiasm. So I really respect and appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, twelve to E, Elementary School Plan for Student Achievement. And Karen wanted me to point out that it is both Principal Erica McGuire and Principal Jeff Franny, who will be presenting this. The agenda was slightly incorrect.
And thank you all principals for.
Yeah, staying.
Hanging in here.
Of course. Karen, are you going to share it on the screen or shall I? All right, I'll get started, but then it will be both Jeff and I. So I'm going to kind of run through this. I don't need to, we don't need to kind of read all the bullets on the screen. I just kind of want to start by saying that we did decide to keep a lot of our goals the same. You know, we've worked harder over the years to base our goals on the LCAP goals. And with everything different with LCAP over the last year, we just decided to keep. Kind of the structure of our, of our goals and what we're working on as a site. Our first goal is related to reclassification of our EL students. We did, you'll notice if you look back at previous schools, our previous SIPsas, and we did change it to twenty percent of our ELs. We know this is less than we normally do reclassify, but with distance learning being the way that it is. Wanting to be realistic in terms of what we could achieve this year. However, I think this school is one that I am most proud of in terms of the work that we're doing, continuing to. Have very strong ELD at our campuses. We started this school year with trainers from Benchmark Advance. And journeys with our staff, teachers of both campuses on their ELD materials and how to use those core, the core. Language arts curriculum for both designated and integrated ELD. We've continued to have training. For the first half of this year with our consultants at Fitch, and I know she was on the call earlier. She's not, I don't think she's here any longer. At Fitch, Karen Reynolds has really stepped up as a teacher leader and provided PD for our teachers as well as our, the consultants that were working with Tiffany St. Julie Rojo. And so here at Fitch, we have designated ELD, those are with a teacher and there's anywhere from four to seven students in a group. Four days a week at forty-five minutes. And then AGS campus is thirty minutes, five days a week. And so you'll see the rest of what we're doing. Our parent professionals have also continued to receive training on ELD. Next slide and Jeff.
So goal two is all about our, our reading and math assessments that we administer multiple times throughout the course of the year. And this is just overall growth that we expect students to have. A couple of things that we do to support students is especially during distance learning, giving them access to ST Math and Lexia. Which are both online platforms for learning to support math and ELA. All teachers at the beginning of the year went through a PBL training in August and then continuing to use race and case strategies. For like deconstructing word problems, writing prompts in humanities and STEM classrooms. And that is pretty much it for that one.
Jeff, can I ask a quick question? It says students will demonstrate growth. Do we know how much growth we're expecting them to grow?
We did not put a percentile, an actual percentile rank in this goal. But we are expecting students to grow a significant amount throughout the course of the year.
And define significant for me, please.
I would say twenty percent or double digits at least.
You do that. I'm impressed. Thank you.
Our next goal, and thanks to support from the board and the community. The hiring of our parent outreach coordinators, I guess it was, I guess last year, it feels like, I mean, Alma has made such an impact that we really feel like. She's been around for a long time. So, so this continues to be a very important goal, increasing our parent involvement, community involvement in our schools. And so a lot of that work again goes to, at our campuses, Alma Diaz, incredible work that she does to reach out to parents. And increase their participation, coordinate through the different parent groups, PTO and ELAC and trying to increase that. You know, parent involvement in our schools and having a go-to person. I think, you know, both of our campuses have always had very welcoming front office staffs. With Lauren Rosie and here with Elda and now Isabel, but Alma provides that kind of direct point of contact. I saw in Chris's report earlier, when he talked about some of the outreach that we're doing or the family events. You know, we have a whole series of parent education nights planned, but we also have a whole series of kind of the more community building events. The gratitude event this week, winter celebration in December, kind of these different holiday celebrations. And that really, we feel is really important for families to feel, feel like they're a part of our school community as well as the. You know, doing, doing the parent orientations and really having kind of, you know, Jeff has done principal coffees. So really just trying to increase the amount of parent involvement. And normally that would include volunteering in classrooms. This year that does not. We took that out of the school. But that will continue to be something that's important as we move forward.
Can I ask Erica, how is that looking as far as the, the Zoom being or whatever, however you're doing? Is that, is that working? Are you getting a good turnout or?
Yeah, it has actually, you know, at our, I think we've. ELAC meetings and then we had, you know, this, the SIPS was presented at a DLOC, ELAC meeting last week. But previous to that, we've just had our elementary ELAC meetings and we've had good participation, the same if not more than we were having in person last year. The Dia de los Martos event that was via Zoom virtually, it was a read aloud. Greta Messick did a read aloud and she and Alma hosted and people shared kind of their, either if they had an at-home altar. Or talked about a loved one. And I think there was something like twenty-five families at that on that Zoom, which is, is really, really great. You know, we hadn't hosted something like that before. And so I think it's giving us ideas of ways we can continue in the future. And that perhaps, you know, virtual events allow for more participation, so.
That's true. Could I be a bit presumptuous and ask you just to, you said twenty-five families, just to make a note of that somewhere, you know, count them and say, hey, we had twenty-five. So when you report, you know, at least I, but others as well, know that it's, hey, we're getting more families, et cetera. And again, I agree probably because of Zoom, you don't have to get up and leave the house, you know, so it may actually be easier. And yeah, thank you.
Right, yeah.
And I will add here, Mike, this is really a review of a plan. It's not necessarily a review of what's worked. Well, I mean, obviously the plan would be based on what's working, right? But, but it's not, the goal tonight is not to like look at.
Thank you, Donna. I got it. I'll shut up. Okay.
So this has definitely been a focus and it aligns really well with goal number three. And it's all about creating a sense of, of community at our sites, especially in a virtual environment. It's, it's. Even more important now than ever. So a lot of the things that we, you know, that we're hearing loud and clear about tonight. You know, just the overall connectivity that we are having with our families. We're definitely continuing that work. And it starts in the classrooms, right? Our virtual classrooms. So there has been a specific charge. That teachers have actually taken on with the support of our ruler SEL curriculum. Through morning meetings, through check-ins, that's really supporting that social emotional piece that we are hearing. Is, is missing, right? In a virtual environment. So we are definitely taking steps to make sure that we're connecting with families, understanding what is getting in the way. If anything, from them attending Zooms or coming to get work that we're giving them. So it's, you know, with the help of our, our school psychologists and behavior specialists, who we're extremely, extremely lucky to have. We're, you know, doing home visits, making specific plans and connecting with families who might be having trouble. You know, attending virtually.
So I will say something if I may, Donna. I, I see the strategies, activities, et cetera, and I would ask that you collect data. So we know, you know, I mean, I think you're doing it. I'm, I'm hearing good things. Data helps.
Right. Yeah. I have a specific number. Right. I get it.
At the mic, Simon, first of all, I want to applaud you because looking at your dashboard data, there's, you know, significant gains. So that's awesome. But I do think it's important to have, and we do have it for the dashboard data. We have baseline data. That's why we can see growth. And I'm really wanting to see data for our kinder and first and second grade. That aren't reflected on the dashboards. I'm really hoping that we could see, because I, for me, I strongly believe in prevention versus intervention. And I think we can only do that when we have clear data about which students are struggling in kindergarten and then first grade. And so I'm really hoping that we can see some data points for those students.
So we will bring this back on consent in December. And we need to move to the next one, which is.
Junior high.
The junior high. Point of reference, it's eight forty-four.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I can be quick. I don't know if you're going to share the summary or if you just want me to go through it, Karen. That's fine.
Would you like me to, Chris?
Well, I was told we weren't going to be creating slides and then my elementary folks showed me up. So of course, Erica always does.
Elementary always.
That's so funny.
That's okay. I can just go through it. It might, it might lead to less questions from Mike.
I have it on my other iPad, so.
So goal one is that all students will progress in their ability to communicate and problem solve through mastery and literacy and mathematics. There's several different strategies that are listed in there. Many pertain to continuing to support our integrated ELD work. So two things that I wanted to point out in, in this goal specifically that we are engaged in. One, as you may remember, we, we redesigned our designated ELD courses. To be, thank you, Karen, to be structured by grade level. We, we, we do not have a significant amount of students who are newcomers of a one or two. So all of our sixth, seventh and eighth grade students are at levels three and four. And so structuring it by grade level allows us to make stronger connections directly with their ELA curriculum. And so our ELA teachers are also our ELD teachers. Yeah, so I wanted to point that, that, that piece out because that was a significant change from when you looked at this last year. And then I also wanted to point out that we have been trying to provide in integrated ELD strategies. We've, we have struggled to maintain a partnership. However, we have two departments that have just. Signed on. They're going to be receiving training and through an E-series from QTEL. Which is a division of WestEd and, and a group that I, I have a lot of experience with and who I highly respect. And we have our, our ELA and history departments who will be receiving a four-part training through them.
Great.
In goal two, probably the biggest pivot here is we, we've always included. Implementing instructional technology across content areas. I think that we have accelerated that, being that we are in distance learning. We've received training from, from, from various applications and programs that we've implemented. And we're continuing to, to find new ones. We are in the process of getting a, a new program called EdPuzzle. For all of our teachers and we'll provide training in, in that as well. So that has pretty much been a, a, a huge focus. The only other one I would want to highlight in there is that we did codify the seven period a day in our, in our. In our collective bargaining agreement last year. And that is vitally important to be able to provide all of our students who are English learners. As well as our students with special, special needs or students who are taking a support class. To still have an elective period. Obviously, it is maybe slightly different during, during our current. Learning environment, but very important for us to, to, for us to continue to maintain. So we did, and in goal three, we did a modified team HHA at the beginning of the year. You know, it, it's interesting. This is a day, usually it encompasses the first two days of school. And sometimes we incorporate days throughout the school year. So it's a time to do team building, community building, and we did that virtually. And I have to give props to our, 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 our teachers who really took that on. Patricia Murphy in particular helped organize and, and, and put that together, but lots of teachers contributed. And, and that's what we did for our first day of school. So we are continuing all of those things. Our GSA and our leadership class continue through distance learning. Our GSA has had a really positive response during this time. And, you know, we, we, we look to continue to do that. We are partnering with some outs, outside agencies. To continue providing additional counseling resources, including Youth Thrive, which is focusing on students who. You know, may be attracted to, to some, some elements that are, are less desirable. And, and trying to help them make more positive choices. So those are some of the things that we're, we're doing. Again, being respectful of the time, I don't want to take too much.
Could you give a quick, a brief summary of on your last bullet, staff continue to receive training regarding equitable practice, cultural competency? Could you stay with those, what, what the training is?
Yeah, so that's not necessarily unique just to HAH. So that would be part of our, our larger district work. That we're going to be partnering with Acosta and, and other groups.
And what are the other groups?
Well, we, we, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure at this, trying to.
Potentially NEP.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's mostly the Acosta work is where we're pivoted to.
Okay, thank you.
We are at eight fifty-one and we have the high school one to do and a couple other relatively short items on the agenda. So do I have a motion to continue for fifteen minutes past nine o'clock?
I move to approve the extension of the meeting.
Oh, I have a second. We have refusal.
On the mouth you went, I'll second.
Well, I mean, it is, it is important to go through this. I will point out that each one of these SIPs has a lot of data attached to it in the board packet. So, yeah, just.
Looking.
Okay, so Chris, I'm sorry, what, did you have another question, Mike? I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, I'm good.
We, we have to finish that boat. We did one, we did. When we did a first.
I'm sorry, yes, first and a second, and then all all in favor of approving the junior.
No.
I.
No, not the.
This is the extension.
All in favor of the extension, please say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Not be a good idea to extend.
She had something else with that pokey. I don't know.
I do want to make a comment though, because there is a lot of data in here, but there isn't a lot of current data because we didn't have dashboard data from last year. And so so I really want to encourage us as a district to really be looking at how we could, what other data we can look at collectively that is common data. It doesn't necessarily have to be state data because we can't always depend on state data and that data is oftentimes autopsy data, right? It's it's already, there's nothing we can do with it. It's already done. So there is a lot of data in here, but it's not current data. So I really want to encourage us as a district to have some benchmark data in here. And because those are local assessments, and I think that's really critical to our equity work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Karen, do I have any slides or?
You do.
There we go. Okay, goal number one is quite frankly, a carryover because we're still concerned about our critical subgroups and the large amount of our efforts of the high schools still go towards that. And that includes our our work in Abbott, our our work with our ARFET students. We do have a smaller population of students still receiving ELD, direct ELD services with Roxanne McNally, but we have a large group of our ARFET students that we monitor through our counseling offices and mix Ms. Marks and myself. We continue to have our push for college and career readiness and equally honoring the different pathways that students teach all the while, fully aware that it's very important that we we continue to build and strengthen our college going culture and kind of our mindset for our students, in particular, our Latino students that still do not matriculate to four year universities at the pace of our Anglo students. It's an area of focus. So goal two. And this is what we talked about earlier, create, modify and monitor when necessary our distance learning program. This obviously is a new goal for the year. This is an ongoing process that I discussed earlier that will include not just professional development and training and support for teachers, but also support for our students through distribute distributing hotspots and helping them get better connectivity at home through our home visits, through our outreach. But this also is going to conclude include changes that we're going to make at the semester on how we deliver our services and what are the course of our day and our week looks looks like. This presents a particular challenge this year, but we've so far held some successful ninth grade parent meetings. We had a, two nights ago, we had our 12th grade parent meeting. It was attended by almost 60 of our graduating students' families to talk about the year and talk about what a senior year looks like in the age of of COVID. We have activities that are being coordinated by all our student advisors and our ASB leadership to try to enhance the connected connectivity from our students to our school at this time. And we'll continue to have, you know, for lack of a better term, town hall meetings and outreach, both educational and just building culture throughout the course of the winter and the second half of the year. And the final goal is a carryover also from last year, continuing to work on a mathematical mindset, growth mindset for mathematics and get away from the idea that some people are good at math and some people are just not good at math. And continuing to do programs like our math team, our department teaching mathematical lessons in our faculty meetings, talking to department chairs about how they can bring mathematical reasoning and problem solving into other subject areas and also working with students just about the different pathways they can take through our math sequence. This also includes support through our tutoring program and extension through kind of breakout rooms and the current Zooms for students that need extra time with mathematics. And on a, on an interesting note about our 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 math improvement or our efforts, we're actually having almost three times the number of students show up for mathematic tutoring, mathematics tutoring, now that it's on Zoom than we did when it was person to person. And Ms. Refrom and Ms. Calhoun, our new math teacher came to us this year, have been doing it eight o'clock to nine o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings. And that's, yeah, bless them for that, right? But it seems to work. And Ms. Calhoun, a couple nights ago, had 14, 15 different students zoom in for at least part of the hour that she worked. And a couple nights, both Mike and she have gone well past the nine o'clock time because kids are still engaged and still asking for support. So, you know, silver linings, we may be learning a little bit of something about what we, what can be positive about distance learning.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you to those teachers. Thank you. That's the kind of stuff we're talking about. That's so gracious. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question though about your your SIPSA. So I'm wondering if the next, when it comes for the approval, if you will have had the opportunity to analyze your data. I noticed that the conclusions based on the data are not filled out. So I'm curious to know what conclusions were drawn by your school site council or your governance group as a result of this data. I don't see evidence of that in any of the sections.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to bring, I'll be happy to bring that back.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. What's our time? Eight, oh, look at that. It's not even nine. No, I'm kidding, but we have other things. Where are we? Now we are at
Seniority list.
Seniority list, the last, the last two items, twelve, three, C. Wake up, Franny.
Oh, I've been away. Unfortunately. Franny, at least you have to drive home.
Oh, my gosh, exactly.
True, good point.
All right. So yes, you have a first look at our seniority list for both bargaining. Actually, I don't remember which one is first, but thank you. And this year, in light of our current circumstances, I got to do some new technology and actually create a little Google survey and linked my document electronically and sent it out electronically to everybody to review and ask me if, you know, for any questions they had. So far, no, nobody seems to have any questions or issues, but it's still a ways till it gets finally approved at the December meeting. So anybody still out there, teacher or classified, just know you can still reach out. It looks like I have, based on my responses, a little over half of the teachers have officially responded. And about a third or so of our classified staff have officially responded. So that is what I have to report on that.
And Franny, do you wait for everyone to respond or is it just more of a review it for errors?
In the good old days of pre-COVID, you know, we'd love to keep the secretaries be bulldogs and, you know, hound everybody to make them come look, but it's been put out there and I've reminded them and, you know, sent it out multiple times. So we're all adults and we can take responsibility for ourselves. So.
You've done your due diligence.
Sir, my former HR buddy.
So this is a discussion item and I take it it'll come back on consent next month. Any questions from the board? Okay. Now on to classified.
Right, and similar process with them. Like I said, I've I've received about a third of the folks officially responding. Nobody has really asked anything substantive. Had to make some little spelling corrections on some people's names, but got that fixed. And again, that's gone out to folks a couple different times. And I will, of course, you know, send it out again, just letting them know it goes for final approval in December. So they'll have plenty of time to let me know if there's anything I missed.
Okay. Again, any questions or comments? No? All right. I believe unless there's something after 16 on my beautiful revised blue numbers, that's it. Just a couple minutes past nine. For those, thank you for sticking around.
Board of trustees comments. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I will support Chris's comments to support half in their activities tomorrow and Friday. And Chris is doing a Q and A live on Zoom on Friday. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna end the long meeting.
I want to thank all the teachers and staff that came tonight. They were, I appreciate that. And thanks to our principals for the reports. It was awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And then school board, we are going to reconvene and close.
Yes.
Karen, will you resend us a closed session Zoom?
I will do that.
And there we are, hopefully.
And we wanted Chris on part of that.
Right.
Okay. Do we? Oh, yeah, no, yeah, it's a goal two. Yes, let's do that.
You don't, you don't get to sign off yet.
No.
Well, we do sign off and go back in.
Sorry, we still need you.
Thank you, everybody for attending and participating.
Everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.